I know. Meeting is over.
Let us listen to the reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we need an approval of the agenda. We do not have a meeting in the morning. We will adjourn the motion to...
I'd like to make the motion to Page 3, the Berchburg Drive, to have its approval to the position of Page 4. Under the...
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three opposed.
Ashley. Ash. Yeah, can't hear.
Next is the approval of minutes. I will adjourn the meeting to approve minutes. Can you hold this? Would you do the first one for me? Just to say okay. Okay. So let's go to January 22nd, the special meeting.
I have a change to the... I have a change for minutes on January 22nd special meeting. It notes that I was... I was ringing via phone. I was there unfortunately. I don't know. The other one said I was there. Like the one right after.
I also have a change under number 3 executive session because I have my name that I... I opened my head. It just says "new," so... Any other instructions? Just for the 22nd? For the 22nd special meeting. The 22nd regular meeting, any fractions? Jump to January 28th special meeting, any fractions?
Okay. Chapler. On page 6, sorry. I'm sure. On page 6, down at the bottom, this is where it says, Ms. Marianne said she would prefer to start with a level budget. She's in favor of hiring assistant superintendent. What is the name of the... Page 6. January 28th. Sorry if I get a number. It's all back and forth. Some of the superintendents before? Okay. But it's page 6. So...
So it says what?
It says she's in favor of hiring an assistant superintendent, hiring a director of curriculum and keeping sports. But what I actually was referring to was hiring assistant superintendent, adding all reduced staff and programs and necessary resources for students back in. Okay. I didn't specify anything regarding sports. And programs. Just finish that up for me. In programs. And annual staff and programs. Necessary resources? And necessary resources. For students back in. Okay. That's all I had for that one.
Anyone else for the January 28th? February 6th. And the correction there. I have now taken motion to approve all the minutes.
Make motion to approve all minutes as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three opposed. Participation will be next. And in accordance with board policy, public comments need to be in a positive tone and no crowd outburst shall be tolerated. Public participation has a two-minute time limit. To be fair to all individuals, the timer will go off and your comments need to be completed. Speaker must remain by their microphone during their comments. If not, I will close the public participation and go into executive session to finish our meeting. Reminder to the board, you are not to engage with the public during public participation. However, during points of information, you may address the comments.
You're right. Can we do like a warning that their two minutes is coming up? Just so we can... Can I say, you know?
If you want to give them less like 30 seconds, you want to raise your hand to me?
Yeah, I can do that at 1 minute and 30. I'll just raise my hand up.
Something so that they know that it's time to wrap up maybe?
Absolutely.
He is the primary speaker. Do that. First two minutes. You have to state your name and your address, please.
Amy Rakhani, 21, Woodfields Drive. Thank you all and Dr. Willet for the long hours you've spent looking at this budget. I believe it's okay to question where money is being spent. Asking questions is how we learn and grow. Not asking them makes us stagnant and complacent. It's more than acceptable to also provide answers to those questions. And it's okay to listen to and to believe the answers provided by experienced and expert personnel. I know many people here tonight feel emotional and passionate about the budget. I can relate to that because I have support... I am too, and I have supported every single budget for the 26 years I've lived in Tallinn. I prefer there to be no cuts. However, Tallinn's voters made their voices heard loudly and clearly in November's election. It's time to start listening to them, no matter how unfavorable that may be to some. As a result of that election, the current town council has said they want a 0% increase. I don't want a 0% budget. I feel this board event can convince their fellow majority party peers to accept the 1.5% versus the 1.87% that Dr. Willet originally proposed. Some members on this board and in the audience weren't living in town when we voted six times on a budget referendum one year to the cost of $12,000 to this town. I never want that to happen again. It was embarrassed when the JI read it. Read our article or article about it. Oh my gosh, I'm running out already? All right. All right. So my point is, why start too high knowing this town council has said they want to see a 0% increase? While I agree your job is to advocate for students, for Tallinn's students, I disagree with the speakers who spoke last week that your job isn't to also consider all taxpayers. I believe it is in respect to presenting a budget you believe the town council will approve, rather than go back and forth with them over and over and risk that 0%. You'll hear, I have so much more to say.
At least I can talk.
Thank you. Kate Ballot, Page 3. There are so many things I want to say. I know it's kind of short, so I'm just going to focus on a bit. I really hope that you restore the art position at the high school as its last will inevitably impact course offerings and the quality of education overall at THS. In addition to positioning the high school program through the preparation process coming up, I also really hope that you do everything possible to ensure a minimum of seven teachers in the fifth grade next year and be sure that TIS's needs are fully being met, particularly in terms of staffing and also in terms of retaining the quality of education. Please prioritize the opinions of the educational experts such as the elementary coordinator and the superintendent when making any decision at the board level. And in particular, retain RAS kids in TIS so that it can enhance the curriculum and provide additional resources to the students and teachers. I wanted to offer a thank you to Dr. Willet for your obvious care and dedication to a high quality of education for the students in Tallinn. I know you were dealt a difficult hand by being asked by the town to reduce the budget that did not exactly have room for reaction. It is clear that you were brought to this table that would have the least negative impact on the district. I hope that it's clear to the power that be in town that this community, oh well, maybe doesn't support that directive. That you were given insofar as it limits the board's ability to maintain good schools and improve them. And that we would like to empower you to stand by a budget that does no harm at all and continues to move the district in positive traction. And thank you to all of you for all of your heartwears.
Good evening. My name is Akoba Gunn, 4th and Day South River. I'm a soon-to-be graduate of Tallinn High School. And my time at this school has been full of struggles, joy, discovery, and a passion in subjects that inspire my interests. Despite my experiences in a multitude of other classes, my life as an art student has seemingly shaped my views the most. It was and still is my outlet and my expression. A chance to release hidden tears with a dash of pencil or tears with a slash of a paint in the bright location. Testing my development through analyzing my still life or testing my creative abilities by formulating ideas and composition. Though I will be leaving this school soon, I do have family that will be or already in Tallinn High School. What we do provides different interests and different creativities. As an older sister and a cousin, I want to ensure that those who have come after me will have the same, if not different, experiences in this school than I did. Better. Without the experience, I know having one art teacher in this firmest... in this fine establishment of a school will not help mold their world. The joy of having more than one teacher taking command of a single subject is their diversity. The subject might be the same, but the method of educating and the educator themselves are what could very well aid students to be enthusiastic about the subject, despite not liking it first place. What doesn't work for some could work for others. Art, like other subjects, calls for different methods, techniques, and equipment used. And it takes time to teach such things. A lack of personnel would not be enough to expose students to a multitude of categories that are contained. However, with the system we have right now, it's a work today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Rose DeVerec, 37, Ryan Road. In addition to the restoration of programs and educational tools this board so thoughtfully agreed upon during last week's meeting, I support restoring a fifth grade teacher, the high school art teacher, RAS kids from TIS, and boys freshman basketball and baseball. My husband and I moved to Tallinn 18 years ago. It's a beautiful community and we heard the school system was top-notch. We moved here prior to having a family. For over a decade, we supported the Tallinn Public School budget, including all the educational and athletic programs that went with it long before we had each other. God blessed us with a son. He's now in sixth grade. It's our turn. Who knows if someday he'll make the winning shot for the state championship or wow visitors at an art festival? I kind of feel jipped. Last week, a member of this board was happy to share that they recently moved in because of the schools. When they moved here, they had the instant benefit of these schools and all this community has to offer. I read through your budget, Dr. Willet, and I know this process wasn't easy for anyone. But it does mention that we are ranked 22nd in 169 towns for household median income. That shows people in this town work extremely hard. The superintendent's budget also shows that we spend what we spend per pupil. We are ranked 132 in per pupil expenditures. That means 131 towns spend more per child than we do. I'd rather rank higher on that list. Please restore the items I mentioned above, and when this process is done, please look to the future. Our children's education is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, thank you guys. My name is Sam Pope. I'm at 23 St. Meadow, and I'm speaking early for my daughter. So I'm speaking on behalf of the art position at high school. I'd like for you guys to restore. So first thing I want to talk to you guys about is, I think it's very easy to see that art is really just done for art's sake and not see the wider benefit. If you look at, you know, our society, more than 90% of adults agree that a broad-based education is important for developing, you know, useful and civic leaders. Like we really need to broadly educate ourselves. So I'm going to take it sort of in a more scientific direction for you guys and tell you that there actually is, honest to God, scientific proof that art education results in higher test scores, more engagement in the school system, higher graduation rates. And so I brought two studies that I'll tell you guys, and these are in younger people because it's harder to find than high school students. So from Moella, this was 2009 to 11. It was a controlled study, 4th through 6th graders. So there was an 11.5% absolute increase in composite test scores and 11 points higher than their cohort of students that were in the control group who did not benefit from the extra art education that was given to the study group. Secondly, the New Brookington Brookings Institute study from Houston of 10,000 students. 10,000 students, 3rd through 8th grade controlled study. They spent $14.67 extra on each student. And so what they got from that is a 3.6% reduction in disciplinary infractions, 13% improvement in standardized writing scores, and 8% increase in scores concerning compassion for others. All right. So what I'll tell you guys is very easy to think that there's no benefit to this because, you know, we all think, well, you're doing art. It's not math. It's not science. It's not English. But the problem is, is that there actually is empirical evidence in adults that, you know, it actually does increase civic engagement, increases greater social tolerance, and other regarding is diminished. And so if we actually allow a broader base of art education for all students, it probably pays more benefits than like even the football, the soccer, any of the sports teams. I would just say that because it builds better human beings, which is what we're really after. All right? Tree doesn't grow. It takes light, takes water, takes soil. To build a good human being takes all these things, including art.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cassandra York, 383 South River Road. So I first want to clarify that I am a teacher, so I value education. But I want to ask a couple of questions. Was Board of Education superintendent given a guideline for the budget this year based on the town council and the town manager's budget based on what the town can afford? Am I allowed to get a yes or not?
Who's speaking?
Okay. So if that is the case, if, and I, from what I've heard, it was a 0% increase because the town is facing some significant challenges financially this year, considering the loss of $5.6 million to the grant list from crumbling foundations this year, which can be recouped once the houses have been fixed. So with that said, if we are facing such a hardship this year, which can be recovered another year, we know that the majority of our budget revenue comes from property taxes at an 80% average based on last year's budget. So majority of our budget comes from taxes and that the majority of our town budget area in terms of what we pay for in a town is education. So if we have a significant increase, we do know that everyone's property taxes will probably increase to support the increase, correct? Okay. So I would love it that we could keep all the positions, but if there is a reason why we cannot and there maybe is a reason why they can be brought back later, that would be great. But we do know that this town is saying that they're struggling with their taxes, struggling to, you know, make ends meet. So that's why certain decisions are made. I'm just hoping that everyone is included in this picture and knowing that our budget is a bottom line. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rebecca Rissley, 103 Mountain Spring Road. I have a lot of things to say, but I'm kind of going to try and focus in on just one area. I just want to say that if you do some research and care of the Tallinn Board of Education budget with surrounding towns and you look at the way that this board's currently trying to whittle down the budget even more, it's short-sighted. It's not focused on growth. Most towns are requesting between a 2.5 and some even more than a 4% increase. The only town nearest requesting less is Coventry. And they have 650 less students to educate, more businesses to pick up, the additional tax burden. And they're actually even able to offer programs like Chinese Free as a rural language at a middle school level, which is something I think we can compare with. If you reduce more this year, we've seen in previous years, the likelihood of getting it back in future years is slim to none. You're not looking to that future and what can be brought back, and you're just continuing to cut more. We're actually, in a lot of ways, still riding the coattails of being known as a great school district for previous years. So we continue to cut into that and to gouge that's going to fall away more and more. Coupled with crumbling foundation issue, which I know is a very big issue in this town. These concerns are making people look elsewhere and buy their homes. I've actually had three separate families that are new to town share with me that they came here for the reputation of the school system. They've actually been very disappointed and in a lot of ways regret that choice because of what we no longer offer and continue to regret of what we stand for. I respectfully request that you add back the proposed cuts at a minimum to bring a level services requested number to the taxpayers.
Evening. Sam Adams, 164 Pine Hill Road. I'm just going to go through stuff, but rather than time, just ask you to address some stuff during your meeting. First is public input. I've been to a few of the workshops. I wanted to speak, but unfortunately, public participation was too late and I didn't stay late enough. But I know you've had over 100 people write in to you. And I think when you have that, that's unusual. When you have that much people coming in, I think you don't just... don't just say what people are writing in about, but you have to carve out some time in the meeting and address it. So I'd ask that you do that, that you carve out time. Here's what people are writing in about. Here's what we think about that. Next thing is a lesser harm budget. In listening at the meetings, Dr. Willet, when asked to speak, would talk about lesser harm. And so I just want to make sure everybody's aware, this is not a level service budget. This is not a no harm budget. This is a lesser harm budget where Dr. Willet felt compelled to have to go through and say, you know, this isn't really the best budget, but I'm going to have to do what I think is lesser harm. And so if anybody disagrees with me or sees it differently, you think you're offering what's in the students' interest, I'd ask that you make that case. But I haven't heard that case being made. Next is ECS grant. That's the biggest state grant, the grant that, at the time, is for education. In this budget, it's actually going up. I've heard the board talk about the ECS grant being one of the reasons you felt like you really needed to cut the budget. By my calculations, it's going up $239,000. And we have some experts here who can tell me if that's not right or not. But budget, budget, it's going up $239,000. So let's talk about that and maybe explain the history of ECS grant. There's $1 million of additional reserve money that's caused by the way we handled ECS over the last few years. I think that's important to talk about. And I realize I'm almost out of time. First, I want to talk about respecting expertise. Dr. Willet has actually not talked much at these meetings. What he has talked is actually apologized for talking. And listening to the conversation on the table was almost painful at times because you really needed Dr. Willet's expertise. Some of the way the decisions were made were based on element... Is that right? Time? Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, George Eldridge, Fisher, Gabriel, Tallinn. I'm reporting for the school of thought of a zero increase. I want to be glad I don't think a lot of people realize that the 0% increase still increases our taxes because of the foundations and all the other things, sewer costs and such. So we are depending, but losing students, I still don't see the ratio between the amount of students and the amount of teachers as compared to 10, 12 years ago when we ran our max. I would like people to realize there's a lot of people out there like myself that are on fixed incomes. And even at a zero increase, I have less money every year spent. So I just think we need to think of what can we cut? And if we cut something, is it because maybe that class size is smaller? We lose something by getting rid of a fifth grade teacher. The class ratios, I know it's from 18 to 20, and now the class is already at 22. We have to look at all those numbers. But I agree with the zero increase that we are still going to have a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
So my name is Anna Marie, and I live on 23 St. Meadow Drive. I'm a sophomore at Tallinn High School, and I'm an art student. I really enjoy doing art, and it's really been a class for me to try to explore stuff about myself and where I might lie in the future. And I want everybody to consider how really important art is, not just for people that in the future would be, say, in a job related to art, but just for people to be experiencing the emotions that they go through in art class. It's really an outlet for people to have a voice without saying words because art is taking what you see in your head and you're putting it figuratively, like outside of your hands, and then you're creating it. And it's really a way of just taking what's in your head, and that's truly true expression. That's probably the most expressive that you can get in schools because you're literally taking what's in your mind and putting it in real life. And also, art class is good because everybody, since everybody is doing this and taking what's in their head and putting it out there, you're exposed to what everybody else is thinking. So I feel like that can really, it's a unique look at what others are thinking and experiencing in their lives. So I feel like by taking that away, it's also taking away a little bit of the social aspect of the school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want to go again?
Nope.
Well, you took the wrong one.
No, I didn't. I wasn't very eager. Good afternoon or good evening. Andy Powell, 21 Clearwood Drive. I'd like to have my comment to reflect that I'm a private citizen. In terms of the conversation on the budget, in deference to the folks in the town council, it's their responsibility to set a tax policy. They're the ones that put forward the referendum for approval. And in deference to Amy, it's not embarrassing for a public to go through the democratic process of determining how much they're going to spend. Yes, there were components of the budget and budgetary items were part of the election as it came up. But in reality, Board of Education does not have the same constraints. You can put forward a budget that you feel will affect, will effectively and efficiently provide a level of education to our students. If that budget, as it goes back to the town council, is rejected and then those numbers actually come back to you, that's when you have to reflect the cuts that come into place. So you don't always have to start at zero. You can start at 2%, you can start at 3%, but have the plan that if it does come back as being less than that, at least you can say we tried to add. And then we've given the public the choice to actually make the determination about how much they want to spend on education. If we look at the goals that are published for the Tallinn Board of Education, budgetary reduction is not one of the goals. To be exact, engage the town, state, and federal officials to discuss and advocate for education. Be brave. Take the step forward. If you start at zero, we won't get it back because we haven't seen it come back to us in the 16 years that I've been here. I greatly appreciate all your time, all your effort and dedication. Thank you very much.
Yes, I was just wondering, since you brought up my name, if I could speak again. No, no. Go ahead.
Okay. I like the hand raised on the first of the people.
Who's speaking? Stop, Katie. God, forget it. First, before you start the title, we said, you know, this matters all the time. Just wanted to be a part of that. Anyways, calling you to check Tallin, Blueberry Hill, and both supporter everything. Do with art, sports, everything, everybody knows that's how I feel. I think, like somebody else, that it's painful to watch you guys. There's no bipartisan up here. The other second thing is, third thing, right, support everything. No bipartisan, but there's no vision. I haven't heard anyone except three people talk about or ask who are looking to the future of what's up here. Thank you for a lot of work. Thank you, Dr. Willet. Again, any questions?
Anyone else?
Again, Amy Rakhani, 21, Woodfields Drive. I'm a Democrat who can accept reelection results. Where were all these education supporters and fans during the election? Election results matter. They have spoken. Am I happy about it? No. Will I accept it? Yes, because my fellow residents have spoken. I would like Dr. Willet to please address the art teacher component tonight because I go to every single one of Dominique Fox's parents and teacher meetings. And on Monday night, she said a couple of things that are not what is happening here tonight when people talk about the cuts. Two teachers are retiring, and unfortunately, sad as it is, one rapid arts teacher passed away. She said that to, it's impossible to find someone to teach the higher level of rapid arts class. She also said photography has changed so much over the years and is not how Mr. Blaze teaches it, that it may be difficult to find... She also said photography has changed so much over the years and is not how Mr. Blaze teaches it, that it may be difficult to find staffing. I don't believe retirements and deaths are actual cuts. And also, I agree with my friend and colleague Andy Powell. I disagree with my friend and colleague Andy Powell. Every time we have a referendum, it costs this town $2,000. That's $12,000 that could be put towards freshman baseball or basketball. Thank you.
Okay, now, Amy, if you ever have to ask a question, last time I was up here, so I would like to ask that. But first, I just would like to thank the students that presented so passionately in regards to the art program. And just reinforce my statements again, that I'm really hoping that that position will be reconsidered. And I really recognize that it impacts the high school as a whole, that the course offerings in general will be lessened. And I understand that that might impact across across high school. And I just am concerned about the opportunities for education that our students will have when they get there. But my question is in regards to something on the budget Q and A on the website regarding the overall class size averages. And I specifically have a question about pre-K. I'm not sure if it's a typo, I hope. It says that the average class is 26, which is far from best practice for pre-K. So I'm just wondering if that can be addressed, and if it is in fact the level that it's at, that there could be some discussion and consulting with experts. And just to acknowledge too, that sometimes experts are in the meeting. We would like to know anything about our children. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, can I say one more thing? If for whatever reason, this is a 14 year old that wants to be an art student, right, or is an art student. But she came up with an idea, for whatever reason, if it's so horrible that you cut the art position, maybe do a Google poll with the students and see what art stuff they really like, and what's most important, and what fills the post. Just an idea, just an idea.
Gary Vash, Talon Poly voters. You got a thankless job, so thanks for doing it. I know it takes a lot of hours and a lot of thought and a lot of interaction, and it's been a million hinges, so it's tough. I appreciate physical responsibility and the questions and what people are looking for. I think the forward thinking and the programming and what are we looking at, instead of, I mean, you know, I found $7,000 here, I found $4,000 here. What's what's happening with that, right? And when Dr. Willet said at two different meetings, I just explained, there's a program saving a ton of money because we have a program here, we don't have to outsource kids. A bigger picture, I think, is what we need to look at. And and as Andy Powell and the viewers said, it's your job to advocate for education and programming, not just, okay, so the voters did speak in some way, but you're the Board of Education, not the town council. And I would like to see more educational discussion based on seeing what's happening in the schools, going to the schools, and not because someone's child didn't like reading programs, so why do we have that one? There's a lot of good stuff going on, but we're losing it. And when you lose it, you don't get it back. That's that's, I've been in this town forever, and and you don't get it back. And I do appreciate everyone's thinking on taxes. This is the only tax you get to vote on, is the most people are going to vote now. I I appreciate people on the six and command actually on one, too, because my boss doesn't just give me more money than I have. But I know what it means, and I do appreciate that, but I just wanted to put those thoughts out there, so thank you very much.
I move to correspondence.
All right, first of all, we received a couple of emails that actually offered constructive criticism upon the best correspondent. So sincerely appreciate that. This is a work in progress and will will get better. So I've taken some of those into account, provided a bit more information here, but as always, please feel free to send emails and help us get better. Second, we received an email from a former Talon Public Schools teacher concerned that the school system will falter since the BOE and town council are, quote, "were concerned with reducing spending from the strength of our schools and expert opinions of our administrators." This person supports a modest and reasonable increase. An email from a current public school teacher in a town similar to Talon, who believes that what is best for our children is to increase the BOE budget over last years. Email requesting that the video from the 22 January meeting be posted. Writer also requests that board members speak up and enunciate clearly. Email from a parent and current math teacher in the Talon Public Schools. Writer comments that while Dr. Willet is confident that staff will be able to provide a quality, competitive education, this will come at a price. The writer discusses the effect in connecting with the individual students as classroom sizes increase. An email supporting a modest and reasonable increase in the Talon BOE budget. Email requesting that we return to a level funding education, keep our schools and therefore our town from suffering a decline in the overall educational model. Email supporting the superintendent's budget of an increase of 1.8. Writer requests the additional addition of a curriculum director slash assistant superintendent slash director of teaching and learning. Email suggesting the need for a second public participation at the 28 Jan. January special meeting. An email requesting a second participation to the 28 January special meeting. The writer goes on to state that this will allow for real time feedback from you people. An email requesting a second public participation to the 28 January meeting to allow additional questions based on what was discussed and new information learned during the meeting. Email asking for a second public participation on the 28 Jan. January special meeting. Writer also commented on their impressions that some of the board members do not value the experience and expertise of others on the board. The writer asks everyone to be kind and courteous to each other. Email requesting a second public participation to the 28 January special meeting. An email from the mother of a special needs child. Writer discusses the wonderful things that Talon Public Schools have done for her child. She asked for continued investment into the quality of the special education staff and parents. Writer also discusses the value of a calmer environment created by the smaller class. Email recognizing the learning curve required by a new board. The writer states that there appears to be a lack of faith and confidence in our experts. Writer is concerned that the strides made for the school system in the last five years are in jeopardy. This writer continues to ask that the entire board supports first and foremost the educational and emotional well being of every child. Email offering the writer's support of this board if their first amendment is to sustaining and improving our schools. Email commending Dr. Willet for speaking with the insurance consultant and finding savings in the budget. Writer asks if it may be possible to enact a pre-approval process for staff line changes. Writer discusses the need to give our staff the tools to identify which students need additional help. The writer asks for teacher assignments to be posted to Power School, thereby reducing the posting needs. Writer supports eliminating all freshman sports to fund programs such as RAS. Writer also supports increasing support to form leaders. An email articulating issues with their kindergarteners bus stop. Email articulating the writer's observations of the Board of Education meeting. Writer intends to email to be instructive and offers recommendations on past school. Email requesting that the board budget questions and answers be posted for the public. Writer also requests that previous budgets are re-posted. Writer asks for impact statements for the positions under consideration for reduction. An email asking if the building administrators have been asked their preference between an assistant superintendent and a curriculum director. An email from a concerned parent requesting that the board members focus our efforts on acting as advocates for the children. Writer believes that Dr. Willet has set an excellent example of humor. An email expressing disappointment that public participation was moved to the end of the meeting despite the published agenda. The writer discussed their concerns that some members of the board are mostly concerned with the costs of education. The priority should be the children's emotional well being. The writer asks board members to remember where the district and the programs have come from. Writer then voices support for a small cut to the line item for line changes. An email containing a proposal from 102 citizens. This email was read into the minutes of the 6th February special. Email respectfully requesting that the members of the BOE focus on finalizing a spending plan that supports high quality education and supports the superintendent's efforts. An email supporting Dr. Willet and all of his hard work with so little resources. The writer stresses that these are hard times, and the only way to make them better is to work together. An email stating four points. The superintendent's proposed budget is not a starting point. Misinformation needs to be corrected. Two, to follow the process. Three, budgeting every line to its lowest point will result in an inability to effectively run the district. Four, more savings can be found in improvements than in cuts. An email supporting the use of the $220,000 to returning the freshman sports, reduce positions, and hiring a curriculum director. An email supporting professional development, but requesting more detail in what past expenditure charts have covered and what the proposed increases would cover. An email apologizing for insensitive comments made during public participation. An email from the parent of an art student at Talon High School. Writer is deeply concerned as to the effects of eliminating an art position and what that will have on the future of their child, who has chosen art as their future. Email commenting on the value of sports. The writer recommends looking at alternative ways to fund the sports and recommends looking at examples in the corporate work. Email expressing disappointment that the majority of the BOE have chosen to put a fraction of a percent in savings over the interest of our students. An email from a 17 year old Talon resident expressing disappointment that the board did not restore all of the reductions with the given insurance savings. Email recommending that the board restore all of the proposed reduced items into the BOE budget. Writer feels that a 1.87 increase is a win that the BOE and superintendent can be proud of. The writer discusses the effects of the reduced art position to both students of art and those that found balance with these classes. Email expressing disappointment in the budget process so far. The writer reminds the board that their purpose is to advocate for our students and not carry on a town agenda. Writer recommends a plan that serves the purpose and future of the educational system. An email commenting on the board's willingness to support a budget with an increase of 1.54%. The writer compares this increase to other towns in Connecticut. Writer asks, how are we going to compete with these towns who seem more willing to invest in their educational system? An email requesting the board to reconsider the use of an audible timer during public participation. The writer feels that this timer makes it difficult to focus on the speaker once the timer has gone off. An email discussing concern that the district is considering allowing families to self-fund freshman teams. Writer recommends against it based on past experiences at the middle school while Dr. Willet was there. Writer then recommends placing the freshman teams back into the budget. Email asking the board to restore a budget to a do no harm budget. Writer discusses a new science teacher who, while new, is already a significant value to the system. Email from a 15 year old resident who works as a graphic designer. He writes of the benefits of the class. Writer then articulates who the ideal instructor would be. An email from a resident who believes that the budget is high enough and that the reductions make sense. And an email asking why a public school district in today's environment do not have an assistant superintendent.
Actually, there was two residents that wanted their emails read in 10 minutes.
I have one.
Well, Tonya mentioned it was already read in. They requested it be read in to this this week's minutes or today's meeting's minutes, but it was read in on the sixth.
But there was an additional one, I'm pretty sure.
Do you want, I have Diane.
Do you have that one?
Yeah. Do you need to name the address they saw? Just, that's Diane Boopie, 29 Talon Farms Room. Dear members of the BOE, I am writing to encourage you to restore all of the items that were not included in Dr. Willet's original proposal to you and lighten the favorable adjustments to insurance estimates. If I am reading the minutes correctly, restoring all items still amounts to only a 1.84% increase over last year's allocation. This feels like a win to me, especially after the excess ECS allocation from last year that was not spent on our students. To be able to go to the town council and our community with this very minimal increase and not lose any of the services and programs we expected to lose on insurance costs were higher, that is an accomplishment that this Board of Ed and Superintendent should be very proud of. Consider the increases proposed in surrounding communities also afflicted with crumbling foundations. You are still quite frugal by comparison. Insisting on something even lower than this before the budget leaves the hands of our education advocates would be short sighted. In contrast, the remaining positions set for elimination are costly for our schools and our kids. I'll speak to the one I understand best, the art position at THS. I assure that you are familiar with the research regarding the impact of the arts on learning. Locally, the THS art department and the graphics program also affected by this position have been extraordinarily influential for our students. Many have found a career path, a new passion, and sometimes scholarships because we have had the resources, human, equipment, and supplies to offer upper level opportunities that are at risk with the loss of personnel represented by this class. Others have simply found balance with the opportunity to think and create in ways that the core classes don't provide. I understand why this was included in the original proposal, but serious consideration should be given to its restoration. We talk about mental health a lot nowadays. The art department provides a form of expression for our students not available in other disciplines. It is a source of pride for our schools and our students, and it offers Talon students a reason to stay in district when this is their passion. I speak to this because I have been a THS parent since 2011 and value this tremendously. I am not advocating for this position over others, because as I stated above, I believe all should be included when you send this budget forward. Thank you all for your service.
The one that I had.
You said it was Michelle's.
I had, yeah, I had, sorry, too many, my ears. No, I had the email that was proposed from the concerned citizens. There was 102 books signed that everyone I'm referring to. So I just wanted to be sure that we have that, and if we can attach that to today's minutes from the 2/6 meeting as well.
Do you have it?
I have a copy of it.
If you send it to Dr. Willet, so attached to this.
Yes.
Do you want the other one we sent? Do you want? If you want to send it to Dr. Willet, so attached to this.
And Jen.
And Jen. Jen's probably more important, actually. Not more important, but.
It is more, a lot of weight.
So Dana, are you going to pass those on to Ms. Palomba? Are you going to forward those to Ms. Palomba? Okay, thanks. Means of information. Would you like to start with the questions that I did?
The timeline on some of those questions, the video has been posted, so it's been up there, but that might have predated the posting of it. So just so people know that the January 22 video is up there. Pre K, that number is correct, but they do a, they do two different sections. The kids aren't there at the same time. This is still not a great number, but yeah, it's pre K 3, pre K 4. So it's two different sections of them, but that's still, that's a lot of K for pre K. The art, you know, retirements and retirement, the, um, particular retirements. You know, when that happens and a position is reduced, it's true that a person doesn't lose their livelihood, which is preferable. You try not to take away people's livelihoods, but what you do lose is you ultimately lose the six sections. Like if there were three people there, and now there's two, you're going to lose the sections that that person taught. So no matter what happens there, if you have the two arts and one graphics, or now it's one art and one graphics, or whatever, however they split it, probably going to, you know, the most straightforward answer is you're probably going to lose some art, probably. the most straightforward answer is you're probably going to lose some art, you're probably going to lose some graphics. And if somebody's coming over from the business department to teach keyboarding, you know, then whatever they were teaching now is not going to be taught. So, you know, we have to talk about it. And Ms. Box is an excellent principal. I know she does an awesome job. She and I are going to be talking about this, but for instance, they're moving over keyboarding to lose computer science. I'm not in favor of that. I don't think I would be okay with losing computer science. I think we need to build up the computer science program, not take it away for keyboarding. You know, and most of you guys know how to keyboard. So I think we have to have a conversation about what happened, but again, I'll stand up and tell you as it, how it is, it's just you are definitely going to lose those six sections. Something has to be lost in there with that one situation. So that's how that kind of plays out. And I think that was the video, our schedules. So just to the students, thank you for coming. It takes a lot. It takes a lot to stand up and do that. You have a lot of courage. We appreciate you for that. Love that you're here. Your voice is the most important. We're the ones that are getting education, so thank you for coming.
I just have something that I'd like to be read into the minutes. Lisa, I actually have a copy for you, so just so you know. And it's memo dated November seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Town manager Michael Rosen asked that each department submit a baseline budget that should not be significantly greater than what was approved in the current fiscal year. We should all understand that the Board of Ed is a very large part of that total town budget. We can debate whether or not a 1.5% Board of Ed budget increase should be considered significantly greater than last year, but I think we have presented here an appropriate budget with a $615,000 increase, which, when it reaches the town council, will be combined with an expected $309,96 reduction in ECS state funding. I think we have a good budget here, and I'm hopeful the council will see it as such. A budget with a much higher increase will not benefit students if it is rejected by the town council or the citizens of Tallinn. Is everyone happy with this budget? Of course not, but I feel we added back in programs that will have the greatest impact on our students' education. I had originally voted no to the literacy how program for regular education. However, after reading these, after attending the instructional rounds, I realized how important these reading programs really were for our youngest students. I tried and tried to find alternative cost savings in the superintendent's proposed budget. I looked at possible reductions in line items like legal expense, door hardware, paving, course reimbursement, interactive displays, table and chairs, and yes, even postage. I was told these could not be reduced to save other programs and positions. I was disappointed and will continue to explore these possibilities in the future, but we were able to find $49,000 in reductions with a detailed line item review of the budget as well as other items that I think will be possible savings in future years. I understand that there are many in the community who feel their voices are not being heard. All the voices were heard, and I'm sorry those people just didn't like what the answers were. I was told recently that people would love me if I brought back the art and freshman sports. I decided to run for Board of Ed, not to have people love me, but because I felt I would offer a fair and balanced approach to the budget process. The answer cannot always be to add more money to the budget. We need to identify efficiencies in the budget and sometimes make tough decisions. Dr. Willett prepared his budget with what he felt would still provide a quality education to our students. I trust his expertise, and we were able to increase student-facing spending from his original proposed budget. When the budget is behind us, I look forward to the discussion this board will have in the future to carry out our vision for Tallinn's schools. Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to take a second to thank Dr. Willett and the staff at THS for those instructional rounds. I walked into it expecting to learn something, but it was so much more than that. Being able to see both the teachers and the students in their environment, to see the size of some of the classes and how the parents had to interact, what was I thinking? The opportunity at the end to then sit down and have an open conversation and ask questions of those teachers, ask their opinions. I saw this happen, what did that mean? And really get their opinions with some respect after. Please pass on to everybody involved how much I appreciate that.
So the budget we have tonight is not the one I would have made myself if I was, you know, I had total control over it, but nevertheless, I believe it is a solid document that I can support and good faith. In this proposal, they're responding for variety of programs. I know we've been criticized for not talking enough about what we do for the students, so I'd like to just highlight a few things that this budget does do. It provides adequate support for special education, particularly the LEAP program. It continues to fund the Tallinn Business Academy and includes the increase of the personal finance workbooks at the high school, which I can say from personal experience, that's an invaluable class for our graduating seniors. Furthermore, invests in our teachers with programs like literacy how. I could go on, but I won't in the interest of time. Bottom line, this is a budget that does support our students and will help provide them with a quality education. I understand that there are calls for more spending, and we've been asked to include those requests and let the town council decide what we can afford. I respect that sentiment, but I can't do that. Tallinn schools are facing financial constraints such as ECS cuts from the state and a devalued grant list in Tallinn. The board must take these factors into account when budgeting, they are too large to ignore. Thus, the board has spent the past month looking for efficiencies and savings to create a budget that serves students and teachers while also accommodating fiscal constraints. This is never an easy task, but I feel comfortable saying that we came close to accomplishing our goal. Through the efforts of the board and Dr. Willett, we were able to identify a large amount of savings that allowed us to put back in several items that were slated to be cut while still coming under the initial budget request. I want to thank my fellow board members and Dr. Willett and all the staff for all the hard work they've done to help make this happen. I feel comfortable submitting this budget to council knowing that we've done our work. Also, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said. One thing that's kind of unfortunate, just with the schedule that we've had with, we missed several meetings early on in the term due to a lot of related things, we haven't had a lot of time to have a goal-setting session, which I think has been a problem. And I think that once we do have that opportunity to do that, you know, come next budget season, we'll be able to offer a much more comprehensive vision about where we want our schools to go. That just was not able to work out this time. And the other thing is with regard to the increases that other towns have been seeing, you know, I just want to say it could be a very apples-to-ponchos comparison. I know to Tallinn needs to study this. I can't speak to what other districts are saying, but just because there's a number doesn't necessarily mean that you can make that comparison. That's it.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. Are we making budget comments right now? Because it's my understanding that under the superintendent's items is the budget discussion.
Some of the answers to questions that people had as well.
Okay, seems like we're making some statements here, so.
Well, I've just made a statement to kind of, you know, clarify my thoughts on this and to kind of answer some of the questions that people had when they were talking about why I hate to do all of this now.
Have to kind of talk about the budget later.
So I have a question about this one's presentation. Is it within the purview of the town manager and the town council to be telling the Board of Education what they need to do? That's a question for you, Dr. Willett.
Under ten-two-twenty-two, the Board of Education has the responsibility of determining what the students' needs are. And to ten-two-twenty-two, you know, you're supposed to be looking at specifically what it is, not specifically bottom line, but that's the town council's, you know, that's the town council's. The town manager did ask the departments to do that, and, you know, in general sense, keeping that in mind is one part of the process.
Okay, oh, thank you. And I just have a response. There are fourteen thousand, let me see, fourteen thousand, six hundred fifty-five Tallinn residents. Eleven thousand, one hundred fifty-two are over the age of eighteen and are presumably able to vote. The highest vote getter got 2,052 votes. There are 23.9% of the folks living in Tallinn are under the age of eighteen. A total of 3,503 children who cannot vote. So that's something that we need to be thinking about. We also need to be thinking about the fact that approximately 68%, more or less, of the households in town have children of school age, between 55 and 68. I could be more specific once I get into the data a little more. So that's just something to think about in response to the comments about the voter scheme.
I did prepare something that I want to say about the budget, but I'll save that for the budget, just in response to some audience. I tried to write everything down. Cassandra asked, was the board given direction? And Dr. Willett had kind of just answered that, but on the seventh, I think that was the day after we were all elected, or it was the day we were elected, there was a memo that went to Dr. Willett saying all departments, and technically we're not a department, but the direction was zero. So that was the direction that we had and the superintendent had. That's Sam. Sam, all right. Thank you for all your emails. The lesser harm, I just, I haven't heard Dr. Willett say that, so I don't know where, you can point me in the right direction where I can see that. I haven't heard that narrative yet. And then Kate, you asked about the class size in pre-K. It looks like there's, Dr. Willett said there's morning and an afternoon. It looks like there's nine in the morning, eleven in the afternoon, sixteen in the morning, sixteen in the afternoon with the other teacher. Right, oh, there you are. So I don't know, share with me later on if those are high or low or if there's a, okay. Thanks, everyone.
Quickly, first of all, you know, again, thank you, everybody, for the email correspondence and the conversations. When I've been out in public, it's, it's been very enlightening to see how many folks are truly passionate about, no matter what side of the aisle. So I appreciate that. And I personally have been listening to, to, to all voices. So we can't hear your voices unless there, you know, emails come through or the conversations are had, so thank you. To the high school students, I wish that I was as put together as you guys were tonight when I was your age. Without sounding condescending, you guys are phenomenal, and I'm quite impressed with your composure this evening and speaking about what you're passionate about. So keep on going. I look forward to hearing about, I have your names, I look forward to hearing about some positive stuff that you guys are doing at the school. But on another note, somebody, you know, I've had a lot of folks with great wisdom and passion and ideas and thoughts that have come across, you know, conversations with me through this process as I learn and grow. And I really liked the words that Andy used the other day, and I'm sorry, I'm going to take this, the guardians of education. I thought that was beautiful and brilliant. And when our Kate folks were here teaching us, you know, we need to be ambassadors and advocates of education. So, you know, some of the things that I've tried to bring to the table is our vision and what the vision can be for the future of our students and supporting our students and supporting our staff. And I want to make sure that we continue to have those thoughtful conversations in regards to being guardians of education and being advocates for education and being those folks for our children, because if we aren't the Board of Education, then who's going to be doing that? So I want to continue those strong conversations and continue to be, yeah, I might make it a bumper sticker, guardians of education.
Can I just, I had a couple reflections from the last meetings that I wanted to share. From my perspective, the board has engaged in healthy discussions about the budget. While this may not be how it's been done in the past, it was done in public, which several people, including past board members, asked that we do. They said more than once that all work should be done in public, that during this process we have been criticized for going through the budget and asking questions during our public special workshop meetings. At our last board meeting, the board collectively worked on coming to a decision regarding the budget that should be sent to the town council. Many had asked, both in person and by email, that we restore things that the superintendent's proposed budget had eliminated. We did just that, restoring most, but not all of those things. We even added something that wasn't a cut, but was in fact moving our district forward by adding support to our youngest readers and for all students. Yet, at the end of our meeting, during the public participation, we faced extreme criticism, angry and aggressive outbursts, and people disregarding clear rules pertaining to public participation. Is that how we want to teach our children to behave? Students are televised and posted online. Education is everywhere, including outside of the classroom and in a Board of Education meeting. I'm disappointed that there appears to be no room for compromise for some. Personally, I saw some board members who may have had one perspective listen with an open mind and change their thought process over the course of these meetings. I was and have been surprised by the lack of acknowledgement that board members have in fact been listening and responding to both the public and our superintendent. We had some hashtags displayed to us at the last meeting, and I had a couple that I wanted to share. Be kind, be respectful, and work together. That's my hope for all of us, and I personally am looking forward to moving past the budget conversations and going towards those visioning and bigger discussions once we get past this, which hopefully is very soon. Thank you.
I just have one quick thing. Just about, you know, do-no-harm budget, whatever you want to call it. I certainly heard Dr. Willett say in our meetings as we discuss the budget that this was the least amount of damage. That's what I heard from him. That least amount of damage is still damage. Let's just make sure that's clear. We're not asking for pie in the sky with 1.84. That is not even a level services budget, so I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Move on to the student representative report by, because she comes in and adds some of her stuff.
So we're in, we're starting second semester at the high school. It started on February third. Finals are over, those were the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of January. I think everyone's pretty glad those are gone, we're done with those. We have midsemester day on the thirty-first, and now we're into second semester.
Uh, one, one question I remember, it was either Mrs. Holden or Mrs. Moran had, last meeting was about the date, maybe both of you, of mental health. The exact dates are still unsure because we're still waiting on confirmation on our speaker, but as soon as we have that, that's definitive, and I will send, I'll send an email to the entire board as soon as, as soon as that's posted. No problem. One thing I just wanted to talk about tonight really quickly is Policy 5190. It's a board policy, it's board legislation, it covers student representatives, and it basically outlines the fact that we shall be accountable to the student body via the student council and consult with the group on a regular basis. That's something we do. We were elected by them, and they are our constituency. We meet with them regularly. I'm also the secretary of the student council. I email them regularly, and I keep them updated on every single Board of Ed meeting. And I just have to say, the students are scared. And yes, they are, I know Dr. Willett prefers to use the term young adults, and I fully agree with him, but I know many people will consider us kids, uneducated, even though we're in school, kids, and I need to remind the board and the public, these are AP Calc students, these are Tallinn Business Academy students, these are national award-winning DECA students, kids who are up on front, up in front of the stage at a DECA national competition, winning awards in front of people from across the United States. These are kids who know finance. These are kids who know what this budget will do, and these are students who have experienced staff cuts before, who have experienced program cuts before. They know what it does. Another thing that's mentioned in Policy 5190 is special meetings and our responsibility to go to them. We try our best to attend special meetings as much as possible. We may not always be able to. I know myself personally. I know myself personally, I will put off homework until midnight just to go to a special meeting at some times, but it's not required in the policy that we go, but we do try our very best. Moving on to the, first of all, to the students who are here, my peers, if you will. Thank you, thank you, because they helped put more faces to more numbers. We hear this, what has become somewhat trite, students not dollar signs. That's reality, that is reality. And thank you for helping make that clear. Those same students, especially with art, I would like to talk about the Connecticut, Connecticut Legislation Public Act 15237. Its states graduating classes 2021 and on should have one credit in the fine arts and eight credits in STEM, including one STEM elective to graduate. They have to. And I personally think that by limiting their chances in both arts and STEM, because STEM, graphics is a STEM, it is a technology class. I think by limiting their opportunities there, that would be incredibly detrimental to their progression as a student. And personally, we need to think about academic return on investment because if we put money into programs now, it will not only help students now, but it will help students later. And I know the big thing that we're really worried about is the money, and of course we are. It will cut costs in the future. That's what academic return on investment is. And yes, Mrs. Moran, I will add on to dovetail off of what you were saying. I, it's on my notebook in the car, I don't have it here, but to paraphrase something Dr. Willett has said in the past, if the budget goes lower than the current number, it will cause irreparable damage to the student population. I am having trouble believing that it's going from no harm to irreparable damage. So I think we are in that gray area of it will cause harm even if it's not a lot. So that's all I have to say.
Just to add on, I think that we have both seen the success of Talon public schools. And I hope that all students in the future will be able to enjoy those same successes. And with this budget, I hope that we can include everything that they'll need to do so.
Thank you, Mary. Moving on to, we're on to the student reports, so I want to hit Birch Grove first. Let's go, I'm not sure.
Just to keep it up, Birch Grove drawing package approval. The board has had this to look at in preliminary form for a couple of weeks. You remember we had a first, so to speak, kind of reading or look at this at one of the previous meetings? And the time has come for the board to take action on this item. It is H3 under superintendents because at this time, I think you're going to be making it a K2 action item to take some action on. You've had some time to look at the documents, of course, the documents are extensive. And at this point, when, and hopefully when you put it for tonight, the chair and I will be able to assign SGC 042 for, which is necessary for them to proceed further in the process. So I'm queuing it up that way.
And we'll open up if any of you have any questions in terms of the drawings.
Okay, and Kate Marie, states in the back, the chair of the Birch Grove committee.
You might want to step out just in case, there's some questions to Fred and Paulie.
Thank you for being here. So I remember last time, we were talking a little bit about like the final estimates for expenses. Did we get any numbers of that?
The building committee got a final construction estimate last night that brought with me, because this was what we spent a lot of time last night talking about. And the estimate for construction, this is a full project estimate, including all, what they call soft costs, is forty-five million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars. So under the forty-six million dollar total project cost.
I just have one, I see that the estimated date to completion is August thirty-first. Is that, that just seems like kind of cutting it close. Do we have an idea of if, what happens if that gets pushed back two weeks? What happens with the portables and the show classes?
So the state office of school construction grants and review has directed that the project be to the point where teachers can move in on August twenty-third, 2021. That is the date we are looking at. That is, I believe the term they're using with me is substantial completion at that point. And that doesn't mean that everything's going to be done, but it will be sufficient so that the teachers can move in and the students can start assuming a first day of school is similar to what we see in normal years. Thank you.
More of the statement, I wanted to thank Katie and the rest of her staff, or the rest of her committee for having to suffer through a series of questions as I try to go through those.
Please answer questions.
Both the two drawing packages and then the specification packages as well. And so they have done an amazing job of answering those to the point where I feel confident in the drawing package. I want to make sure that there's still an avenue for additional questions as we proceed to the rest.
Absolutely, please feel free to email me questions, as you've been doing. That's worked really well for me because it, a few things I had to look up for it, so. That certainly works well. Please ask your questions. And our meetings are open to the public. And you might find that a lot of interesting or maybe boring things are reviewed in our meetings as well. So you're always invited.
Are there any other further questions?
I just have a quick statement.
I'm sorry, I was making.
Oh, sorry. I just have a quick statement. I just, and I know that we're all digging through everything, so Katie and the team, I've only been privy to come to a couple of meetings. But I feel very confident in the numbers that they've provided us last night. They were very thorough, they were very detailed, very accurate to my minute detail. I know there's still some things to squash out as we go through. And they are current, they are aware of any kind of concerns. They are aware of the forty-six million dollar cap rate. Katie's made that crystal clear, the state's made that crystal clear, we made it crystal clear. But we have folks on that committee that are absolutely knowledgeable in their field. I feel very comfortable with the folks that are representing Talon and representing the state and representing, you know, the construction company, GCJ, Demato, all those folks. It's been very eye-opening and I would invite folks to come to some of those exciting, yet not so boring meetings sometimes, because it really is, it's very, it's, listening to our educators and listening to the contractors and such talk about how it impacts our students on tile and walls and floors and not just our educators. So we're really looking at all aspects of impacting the whole student, even at our lowest guys in town. So thank you, Katie.
Do you have a motion to move this to K2 for board action?
I'd like to move H1 Birch Grove drawing package approval to K2 for board action. And I'd like to make it to take immediately, is that right?
Seven.
Does that make it true I was doing it right? So we can do the action now, you mean? Yeah.
So Katie can like run with the stuff?
Yes.
More importantly, our project, thank you, we have a project manager sitting outside, prepared to swoop up all the papers and get ready to present them to the state tomorrow.
So then I'm going to make the motion to approve the structure of drawing package approval. Oh, sorry, here it is, I had the wrong paper. I'd like to make the motion to approve the final Birch Grove Primary School Phase III plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated January twentieth, 2020, not to exceed forty-six million total project cost for state office of school construction grants and review project number 142-0083N. This motion authorized the chair of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools to sign state form SCG 042. Request for review of final plans.
Seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor, stay ahead.
Hi.
Any opposed, any intentions, motion passes?
Actually, is it okay if I?
I'm just signing right now.
Dr. Willett too.
Well, he's very excited for it.
Pleasure.
He's signing right now.
Sorry, everybody, we're going to build a school. Turns out there's a lot of things.
Of course.
Thank you guys very much. Nope, I'm good, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So those are all sides.
All right, so shifting gears to what we're doing. All right, so this, this just restarts our discussion about the Board of Education adopted budget. As a recall, back on January eighth, I presented the budget to the Board of Education for its consideration. Through the period of weeks that followed up to this point, the Board of Education had a series of meetings and sessions to decide what they ultimately would move forward as the Board of Education budget. And tonight, the Board of Education budget is presented, making the adjustments that were directed to me to make. I have added some changes to the narrative. The introduction to the Board of Education budget now has some new information in it that was gathered between the two times, so I can do a quick review of that if you want.
Does it have to be changed?
Yeah, it's just some narrative, it's updates more than anything else. Please find within this document, the Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2021, BOEVE FY21. The Board of Education budget is forty thousand, five hundred ninety-four hundred and eight dollars, representing a six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and three dollar increase, or 1.54% over the fiscal year 20 budget. The Board of Education adopted budget contains a number of reductions to meet this funding level. These reductions were made through a process of intensive budget review. Major cost drivers for the Board of Education budget for fiscal year 21 included negotiated bargaining unit agreements, transportation, and insurance. For example, despite the excellent job of the negotiations team and settlement agreement that yielded the fifty-ninth lowest of seventy-one settlements as of January twenty-second, 2020, the increase to the fiscal year 21 budget for the teacher bargaining unit alone is about four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight, or 1.04% of the current budget request. Teachers remain fairly and modestly compensated and are at the bottom half or lower of districts with respect to settlements and compensation for teachers with an master's and our six-year degree, which is majority of the TPS teachers, and the bottom quartile for all other teaching groups. Administrative negotiations yielded the thirty-sixth lowest of fifty-six settlements as of January twenty-second, 2020, with an increase of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven. Combined with the modest and reasonable increases of the teacher and administrative bargaining units alone equal 1.14%, or four hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-five of the fiscal year 2021 budget request. These increases, combined with the insurance increase for fiscal year 21 of four ninety-two oh four, equal an increase of nine hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine, or 2.4% for these factors alone. Therefore, arriving at a 1.54% budget, or a six hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred and three increase, represents conservative budgeting and provides for a responsible budget for the community of Talon. The town of Talon is a wonderful place to live, and the median income ranks twenty-second out of one hundred sixty-nine towns in Connecticut in the census sphere of 2017. A triple-A standard in boards and pitches ratings on the Office of Policy and Management and health and, you know, healthy fund balance ranking thirty-ninth in Connecticut for equalized mill rate, and an Anglicus wealth rating for fiscal year 20 of the third highest in the county, and an excellent school system recognized by US World News Report. The community has many strengths. Even as communities like Vernon, Stafford, Manchester, Ellington, South Windsor, Talon, and roughly forty-one towns in Connecticut face evaluating and replacing foundations, the Piratine, the Talon Public Schools has received eighty-nine percent funding for the new Birch Grove Primary School from the state of Connecticut, and a hundred percent reimbursement for the temporary portables that house our students while the BGP building is being built. This is all due to the support of our legislators. While all communities have their challenges financially and otherwise, the town of Talon comes out strong in virtually every measure, as a great place to live, work, and learn. The Talon Public School education is an excellent return on investment. With all of Talon's economic strength and vibrancy, the Talon Public Schools represents excellent value for the community. The school system ranks one hundred and thirtieth out of one hundred sixty-six towns in per pupil expenditure as of the October eighteen, 2019 report, making it in the lowest quartile of the state for what is spent on its students. The Talon Public School budgets have a seven-year average of 1.63 increase, five-year average of 1.46, and a three-year average of 0.54. Class sizes are respectable twenty to twenty-two, average range for K8, about twenty-two grades for grades nine and nine through twelve, and a district average of about twenty-two. Enrollment has declined over recent years. Expectations from the state and federal government has increased with relative funding requirements and obligations. Even so, the Talon Public Schools have adjusted to the enrollment decline by reducing about one teacher for every twenty students lost in enrollment from fiscal year six to fiscal year twenty, 2019. The Talon Public Schools have the third highest SAT math and sixth highest SAT ELA scores in the dirt and perform well in the state's accountability matrix, far exceeding state average on all measures. The four-year cohort graduation rate for Talon is in the high nineties, is in the high nineties every year, with a high of a hundred percent graduating in 2018. Students graduated from Talon High School to go on to Prunam Young, Bryant, Clark, Loyola, Pennsylvania State, Stony Brook, Syracuse, Trinity, Bill Noble, Wheaton, and state universities like the University of Connecticut and the University of Delaware, to name just a few. There is no doubt that the Talon Public Schools provide excellent opportunities for success at a reasonable price. The benefits and highlights of this budget, while this budget represents some significant reductions in program and staff, it maintains the crucial integrity of the personnel resources by improving quality of education of children. The budget represents a responsible and reasonable request of the Talon community in supporting learning needs. Lighthouse initiatives remain vibrant in this budget with strong support for intervention and the continued development of programs that provide excellent alternatives to outplacement. Tuition costs for the district are mitigated, and overall, fewer students are choosing magnets and charters as alternatives than in the past. Talon is now positioned to accept tuition from other districts and programs, further strengthening resources. Initiatives like the Talon Business Academy are getting the attention of districts that wish to investigate and follow Talon's model. And new pathways are currently being developed to continue to maximize Talon's competitiveness and viability. A focus on STEAM engineering and science has yielded excellent results and performance for our students in science on NGSS assessments and measures and learning opportunities. New opportunities in robotics exist in Talon's technology program, and Talon's strong presence in the NGSS development team has helped provide for an excellent implementation of those standards in our district. Through programs like foundation, structural, living. Through programs like Foundation, Structured Literacy Spire, and ATERTS, students reading phonics and special needs are being addressed, providing great in-district support for students at all levels and providing excellent secondary college and career readiness. The excellent district internal programs reduce the need for costly and isolating out-of-district alternative programs to be explored. With strong commitment to mastery of learning, twenty-first century learning standards, and understanding by design, as well as the development of a portrait of a graduate, the Tallinn Public Schools are exercising best practice and solid pedagogy that live up to the requirements of the state and federal government and put the district on the right path in preparation for approaching this gradation process with the New England Association of School and Colleges in the coming decade. Board of Ed budget also maintains crucial programs that provide excellent educational supports for children in general and special education. These programs provide high-quality curriculum and practices that strengthen teacher capacity, student learning, and ensure excellent program structures that minimize the need for outplacements. The programs are part of our professional development and professional education services include things like database interventions, AVA, autism consultation, and literacy house service. Through data-based intervention programming, Dr. David Kearns teaches a way to drill down to specific needs areas of students, increasing staff capacity. Training will be disseminated in the future without the need for direct services. Next year, this service will play a large part in helping identify students at a younger age and early level who have trouble in reading and math, including general and special populations. This helps the district serve students who might otherwise be overlooked, helping address the needs before they become a larger problem and the intense and costly services needed. The district provides excellent support for students with AVA needs and embarked on this endeavor around two thousand and seven. Students that came into the district at that time are progressing to higher grades. In the past, social communication and other needs may outplace this typical option. The specialists utilized for autism special services help train our teams of teachers and work directly with population of students. Along with ATERTS, these program structures have provided excellent services within district that provide alternatives to outplacement. In addition, this service has been effectively utilized in district mediations and instructional support. Literacy house coaching and program development in all the district buildings for special education, and now with this Board of Ed budget, general education, teachers, and interventionists in English and English language arts will occur. Coaches also work directly with students to help implement the structured literacy program. Structured literacy is a science of reading instruction that helps support struggling populations and strengthens all student capabilities. This coaching consulting provides training for teachers and ongoing PD and support during instructional day, as well as numerous resources. The program is instrumental in the development of structured literacy in the Tallinn Public Schools at all levels, including the high school class and overall with curriculum writing and development. The impact of reductions, despite the strengths this budget provides, reductions to this budget do have impacts to the overall system. These impacts include the loss of the fifth-grade teaching position and the loss of the unified arts position at the high school. In addition to these personnel reductions, two freshmen's sports teams, boys' basketball, and boys' baseball are also eliminated. Significant reductions were made to technology service requests, professional development conferences, travel, books, equipment, and office supplies, textbooks, consultant services, and educational materials. For examples, some math and science manipulism equipment were also heavily reduced. Programs removed from this budget include the RAS program at Tallinn Intermediate School, a standards-aligned reading practice program personalized for each student, and the Kenrick's materials were partially funded. Across the board, reductions were made to substitutes, office, and classroom supply. In summary, the Board of Education budget for fiscal year twenty-one offers strong support for student learning and program opportunities and continuation of program efforts that maintain the competitiveness and vibrancy of the Tallinn Public Schools and support student learning and social emotional needs. This is achieved within a reasonable budget request, is respectfully submitted to the Board of Education for adoption, and subsequently to the town manager for town council's consideration. So you all know what's in this because your directors need to make the changes that are there. So this is the part where I stop talking. And you start talking.
I mean, I could just go. I'm like, lose my voice here. Um, around, and then we'll go around.
Said most of what I wanted to say last meeting, so I don't have anything to say. Is this go around?
I already said my little speech, so I am, uh, I'm good as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willett, for, um, putting this together for us for tonight. Um, I, although I don't agree with everything in this budget, I want to make sure that you hear from me that I was for a level services budget. Uh, I was hopeful and I made it clear in, in some of my askings was to use the two hundred and twenty thousand eight eighty that was found, that was recovered from the insurance reduction to restate all considering the initial one point eight seven percent proposed budget. Uh, I would also still like to see an assistant superintendent, board director of curriculum added in based on additional research of what's actually needed for our district. It's our responsibility as Board of, Board of Ed members, um, to advocate for education, um, and ensure quality education in our school system. Uh, I was very happy when we had that two hundred and twenty thousand dollars come back, um, because it, it almost, um, gave us a little bit of relief so that we can add some stuff back in. Um, I do acknowledge that we did add several factors that we did work together to compromise, to get on, um, put back into the budget. However, there are some things that I think that we would be detrimental, um, if we did not put them back in specifically the fifth-grade teacher and the loss of the unified arts position. Education and enrollment is always evolving and consistently there's the ups and flows. For instance, there is a family of three, um, that recently moved to Simsbury a year ago, and they will be relocating back to their home here in Tallinn over the next handful of months. Um, so that is just something that I know personally, um, for, from members in the community, but there's always those ups and flows, right? So we need to be prepared for that. Um, but I also think, you know, we talk about faculty cuts and we talk about staffing cuts. Um, yeah, and it's concerning to me that we're losing educators in this process. Now, whether it would be a death or whether it be a retirement, they're still losing educators teaching those positions in, in those respective classrooms. So for instance, in the art, uh, and it, you lose X amount of classes, or I don't know what you call them, periods sections. We call them periods in my day, uh, the period, first period, second period. Uh, so you lose those sections, but then, uh, as you explained in some of the points of information is you have to move someone over to teach another class to, to, to take that section, and it snowball affects to other classes. So it doesn't just, the arts position doesn't just affect, affect the arts. It affects other things when we have teachers moving over to kind of cover those. Uh, you all know how I feel about the fifth-grade position with the balance, um, for those students who need that consistency, um, and have that structure. Again, we heard from our, um, educators, um, when we did that meeting with all our educators at the library, um, and they talked about being able to do it and it'd be doable with the budget that he proposed prior. And, um, I appreciate their enthusiasm, their excitement, but I also want to make sure that they have the tools to succeed in their roles as educators, to succeed in teaching children of Tallinn, and the future children of Tallinn and the education. So I would be remiss if I didn't state that I, you know, this one, this budget that's presented, I would like those few things discussed and, and potentially added back in. Be a guardian of education.
I'll put in for that bumper sticker.
Yeah, right.
Fun breathing.
Good. You can tell. I just want to cover a couple of thoughts. Um, the instructional rounds at TIS that we went on, um, Toni King, Christina, Ashley, myself, Christine. And Dana, sorry. You just talked so I was like, sorry. Um, anyway, it was, it was really great, and I'm glad that, um, all of us were able to go. Um, I think it's, it's a great opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Willett, for putting it together. I think it's, it's a lot of work for the educators to, um, you know, give up part of their day and have us, you know, hover. Um, so, um, I appreciate their time. So there were five educators with us and the principal, and, um, what I want to say is collectively, um, those six educators have approximately a hundred and fifty years of teaching experience. So I hope that in our observations there, that we really realize we have to trust them because what they need for resources is important for them to get through the day with twenty-five kids in a classroom. So when we see the work that goes into it specifically, I think that that's valuable for us. That being said, um, so that was great, and, um, we went over our time a little bit. So I asked a question afterwards about, um, you know, several years ago, TIS lost their health teacher. They don't have one right now. It was part of those big chunk of cuts that happened back in two thousand seventeen. Um, without that health teacher, the requirements from the state that they have to take care of kind of comes back on the classroom teachers. It comes back to the guidance counselors. Some things don't probably get done, fall through the cracks. Um, but, you know, even at grades three through five, these kids are coming to school with issues, trauma. You know, the things we talk about today, vaping, suicide, all of that, um, these kids are dealing with that. Um, a health teacher would have been, and would be instrumental in addressing those issues. So they've been doing without that person. So when we are talking about these cuts, I want to make sure that we are also cognizant of some historical information here because when we lose things, they don't come back, and it does fall back on the teachers or whoever. And guess who takes the brunt of that is the kids. So I just wanted to give that as an example because I think it's important. I don't know, maybe someday we can get a health teacher back there. I also wanted to talk about, um, there's really been no focus on the boulders in this district. We ever had conversation about our needs and investments, our successes, about adapting and growing our vision and plan for the future. Outplacements have decreased from thirty-five in two thousand fifteen down to a projected thirteen in twenty twenty-one. This is thanks to Dr. Willett's careful and thoughtful planning. We should be celebrating that, and we should be talking about what are we going to do further? Not just about outplacements, but about the whole district. Because that's significant, and I think that that's getting lost in conversation. In its inaugural year, the Tallinn Business Academy exceeded its application goal. Fantastic. We haven't talked about it. Social, emotional learning, Dr. Willett talks about portrait of graduate, mental health initiatives. All of these are important conversations that we haven't had. We heard from a parent that said her student is not going to get the education she expected based on staff cuts in this budget. If even one student feels they will not be getting the educational experience they planned on, then that is not okay for me as a Board of Education, Board of Education member. That same parent asked me if I thought there was any chance of delaying this cut in the art department for one year. This would give Ms. Fox and the art department a chance to restructure in a more controlled manner. This cut done at this time marks the end of what Mr. Blaze and Mrs. Brochus worked so hard to build. At least give them a chance to rebuild. I think that is a fair request, I really do. Because this was built by them, that art department. There was a lot of work put into that. I think keeping that art position gives us the ability to adapt to the situation. And it's up to our administrators and Dr. Willett to figure that out. I don't know who they're going to hire. It may be somebody who's really qualified in graphics. Maybe they do find someone. But that's their job to figure that out. But it's my job as Board of Education member to talk about the value of that position for the students. So I don't want just to talk about art. Sport is important, too. That's why I feel that I can support a one point eight four percent increase because this at least allows us to have some kind of sustainability and stability for our school system. Also, there was comment at our last meeting about being mad at the state of Connecticut. You can get mad when you want at the state of Connecticut, but there's a lot of educational issues that we have to deal with them on, and I'm certainly working on being in their faces a lot about some of those things. But they're also funding eighty-nine percent of the rebuild of our elementary school. So we should be very grateful for that because they're working really hard to make sure that that happens. So that's just some stuff that I had kind of set aside to talk about. There's still needs, I think, to be filled in our district. And this is not, like I said, this is not pie in the sky. We're not asking for everything because who, anybody who was paying attention maybe early on in November when Dr. Willett did his earlier budget presentation, um, there was a whole list of things from our administrators for positions that they needed, and those are not part of this. So I think we need to have that realistic conversation. That's all I got. Hopefully that was enough.
I was going to say this before, but I think I'm going to leave it now. And I appreciate what Karen had to say in terms of the future and goals. Like, we really haven't had that time to talk about that and jump right into a budget and, and snowstorms and delays and whatever hands we were dealt. You know, this, these were the cards we were dealt, and I can't wait for those goal-setting discussions and as we get through this budget process. But, um, for those of you that don't know me, I'm the proud mom of a ten-month-old and a four-and-a-half-year-old, and I'm volunteering my time to be a voice of sustainability for future generations to move here and stay here, and that is my truth. As I said last week, I came from a place of gratitude for what we have, a place of balance, and a place of compromise. The work ethic and positive attitude of our finance committee in this particular budget process is unparalleled. I'm extremely pleased that we had the opportunity to add, to add to our budget without asking the taxpayer for what was necessary. Last week, I felt great about the additions to our budget, and I felt terrible supporting the superintendent's reductions. These decisions weren't made lightly. They were based on enrollment data that he provided to us, as well as a list of staff that Karen, uh, referenced, um, requests for the future. Doesn't make it any easier. Part of advocating for education for all students is advocating for sustainability so that we don't drive lower or middle-income families out of town. As long as property taxes are tied to education and sports and clubs are tied to fees, the gap between rich and poor will be widened. The struggling families will be pushed out or trapped here with homes that won't sell, and those who can afford to stay will stay. So contrary to what some of you out there believe, I have a great deal of respect for Dr. Willett. We don't always see eye to eye, we challenge each other, and I think that's a good thing. I'd like to think we have a mutual respect for each other. He wasn't afraid to make some tough decisions that would pave a path forward for necessary programs. I don't know if you will take this as a compliment, Dr. Willett, but I'm appreciative that your decisions were data-driven and not from a place of emotion. In regards to, um, what happened last, at last week's meeting, uh, we cannot we cannot allow political tribalism to be an excuse for what happened last week. And I would like to thank everyone for understanding my shock at the situation as I too did not respect the rules of order. And I hope we can forgive each other. The room can be charged with emotion, however, we should not let emotions govern our community. I've heard some of you say you don't feel heard, and I do hear you. It's hard for me to hear you, our kids. But I know that we still have our, at the high school, and I know that Dr. Willett and the staff in place is working to keep the program alive for you. Sorry, I went off script. I do hear you. My question for you is, do you hear the struggling family that wants to stay here? The reason I ran again is because I didn't feel heard even with a seat at the table the last go-around. So tonight's vote for me is based on balance, a balance between the angry voices wanting more and the ones voicing their quiet appreciation behind the scenes. And I hope that, you know, all my friends on the other side, that I will consider voting yes on this budget even though it doesn't have everything you want. Because this does really come from a place of compromise. So thank you. I'm done.
I already kind of spoke on this a little bit. I do want to agree with Karen regarding the fact that we really have not had a chance to have a conversation about a lot of the direction and some of those other higher-level conversations. And that was unfortunate. We did have two snowstorms that canceled at least, I think, two of our meetings and sort of thrust us into this budget situation. I am comfortable with the budget. I will say that given the fact that we have literacy how for the special educators and some of our other teachers go there for training and can share that if Dr. Willett feels that the best course of action is to not have the additional literacy how and read and use that money towards the art position, I would personally not necessarily be against that. But other than that, as far as the level goes, I feel like we talked a lot about it and made actually what I consider, will find hard decision around where we're at. But that's it.
I just first want to thank all the students who spoke tonight. I hope that you guys know that you guys are the reason I'm sitting here? And I'm fighting for you, and we all are. And I do want to make a comment about class size. Given my 17 years of teaching experience and five years' experience as a school administrator, the larger the class size, the more difficult it is to create a community in the classroom, to support academic needs of students, to make sure that they are getting their Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three instruction, and to make sure that their social and emotional needs are met. The bigger the class it is, the harder that is for a individual professional educator to do. So please realize that. That has direct impact when we cut a grade school teacher on class size. That's the fifth-grade position that I'm referring to. I don't think I can add anything more regarding the art position that has already been said and you've said it at the beginning of the year. I'd like to remind those of us who consider ourselves taxpayers and are taxpayers, because you know, those are real bills that come in my mail too. Our property values are connected to the quality of our schools. We know this. Education is an investment in our property value. Talon is comprised of 95% single-family homes. Just something to think about. The Board of Education received approximately 50 emails, separate emails, supporting reinstating all the cuts. And then there was 102 Talon taxpayers who signed that letter that we referred to. We received about nine separate emails saying that we should cut it more or keep it at the 1.84. This is a ratio of 16 to 1, just for perspective. Shockingly, not. I support a 1.84 increase to include the two teachers, grads for the intermediate school and the freshman teens. This is in accordance with what the 102 folks that wrote to us would like. This is in accordance with what I think is best for the district based on what Dr. Willett has said and what the professionals have said that work with him. This is not about what I want. It is not based on emotion. But I believe that these positions are absolutely needed in order to maintain our level of integrity on which our property values are based. Again, thank you to the kids and to all of the adults that spoke tonight. I hear all of you and I appreciate what you're saying. And I do appreciate the work of this board in trying to put forth a good budget. But I, you know, I ask us all, can we do more?
All right. You know what? I appreciate my conversation that I had with Dr. Willett. I have to preface each one by me actually saying, Dr. Willett, I'm going to attempt to be brief. But I'd be remiss if my wife was the only one that had to listen to my ranting and soliloquies over what I've learned during this budget process. You got me too, too. You know, I've only been here a couple of years, you know, here in Connecticut, but Talon is, at this moment, an absolutely amazing school. Any place that can create or help to mold the type of students that I watched speak today is something special. To the kids, thank you. To the parents that brought them here and support them, my appreciation. I have, my daughter is an animation major at UConn. I have spent the long nights for the mad dashes to Home Depot because she needed a piece of construction paper or some tool that I honestly don't understand, but I've got a picture and a description of. I've been there. She wept because her portfolio wasn't good enough. And she cheered as she showed me the video that she made in class. I understand what art can mean to a person for their life and what art can mean to others, even if that's not what they make their most. I am, I am by trade, an engineer. I am going to ask millions of questions as poor Katie had to learn. But also, as we've gone through this process, I leaned very heavily on Dr. Willett and his staff, on the financial people on this board, on the professional educators on this board. To answer those questions for me to help me delve into the little bits as we go through them, I certainly appreciate that. Somebody whose opinion I, you know, I respect an awful lot, reiterated a couple of times in the public session and then also in a private conversation, that it's the board's, the board has the right to ask the town council for a number that's higher than the council wants. And I agree, but I'd like to change that a little bit. And I think that the board has the right and the responsibility to ask the town council for the number that they believe is correct, the number that's right, whether that's necessarily what the council wants to do. But to do that, I think it's our responsibility to dig into the details, to really get down to the nuts and the bolts and say that, before I ask for more money, that I'm confident the money that we have is being used efficiently and to the best of our abilities. I agree wholeheartedly with something that Karen said. You know, our vision, not only as a board but as a district, is critical. I think it's incredibly difficult to understand and develop a budget from November to February. But Dr. Willett said something in one of our previous meetings that was an absolute goal. And then he said, once we get through this, we have an entire year to dig through the budget, to dig through the processes. So I want to say I'm sorry to Rainey because I don't think the budget is ever going to. You know, I know from a, you know, as a member of the policy committee, that my intention is to really dig into the policies to help us position ourselves so that Dr. Willett and his staff can take absolute advantage of the resources that they have to drive us to that goal. Not necessarily the goal for this year, but the goal for five years, the goal for 10 years. But where does Talon end up when we really look down that line and we really develop? When my three-year-old graduates from high school, I want her to be in the place where these are going to be. And I think that means that we have to take some time and we have to really ask our questions. We have to nitpick. We have to spend more time in Dr. Willett's office than he probably wants us in there. On the flip side, we have to spend more time looking at those students, looking at those teachers, listening to the people that have spent that time emailing. The few of you that I've had the time to respond to, thank you. Because I feel like rather than answer your questions, I responded with questions of my own because I too want to learn from you. So am I happy with the budget that's here? No. Because I don't believe that it's one that we fully investigated. But I do believe in the process. I believe that we spent a lot of time talking about it. I believe that we got a lot of information for it. And I believe that we, as a board, in the last meeting, sat and voted and came up with a unified direction to give to Dr. Willett. And for that, I support this. I support this knowing that a year from now, we're going to delve even deeper. We're going to fine-tune that and we're going to get to the place where we can then apply the resources exactly the way we need to. Thank you.
Some data, actually, to share. Since data is a good thing, here's some data. Our students in art are very competitive with AP exam scores and averaging the high percentile with scores averaging four to five out of five. The counseling department have more information on that, but I don't have that part. Our students, our art students are accepted to top-notch art schools and other university art programs and are also awarded merit-based scholarships for their portfolios from many competitive art schools, including Maryland Institute College of Art, MassArt, Rhode Island School of Design, Pratt Institute, Hartford Art School at University of Hartford, Maine College of Art, School of Visual Arts, School of the Art Institute of Chicago, and Virginia Commonwealth University, let's just to name a few. Scholarships are earned in significant dollar amounts ranging from $25,000 to $45,000. Our THS students have received many accolades at both state and national levels. Students employed and working in many, many careers in the arts include graphic design, animation, fashion design, industrial design and architecture, medical illustration, fine arts, and others. I think it's important to note again that there's a lot of kids that take art as as repeaters. So they don't just take the one basic art course. They want to take more. They may not be headed to art school, but they take multiple classes in those visual arts. Simply because it nourishes their creative spirit and challenges them to solve visual problems using another part of their brains. I think we heard from the students about the importance of those classes for them. And this will have an effect on our students by limiting the sections of art. So I am very saddened that you're not listening to them and that we are not listening to the many people that wrote in because that is our job also. So 1.84, I think, is still a prudent, financially prudent budget. And just, I'm sad that we're not listening to people and our students, so.
I'm just going to say a couple things. And this is also the assumption that the 1.84 is even going to be approved. So they can come back and tell us that we need to go down even lower. So, but here's, here's, here's where my head is at. You know, we've gone through, we've tried to see exactly where, you know, the cuts that you provided to see what we can do to bring back and to bring it back at like something that I could sit there and really fight for and say, you know, yes, there are definitely still some things I would love to have in this budget. You know, would 1.84 be the answer? I don't think so, you know, it's like, I see them saying to us, you have to go lower. And so then that puts us into another position that we have to relook at what we even have on our list now that we're adding.
That's a scary assumption, actually.
It is, but that's, that is something that goes through. Like, how do you know? You don't know. But if you can sit there and say, look, if we've done the diligence we've gone through, we have gone through the line items, we have tried to see structural, come to some kind of census of everybody for opinion. I mean, there's some that really don't want to add anything and there's some that want to add everything. But you have to have a happy medium to go forward together, to stand behind it and to have that motion for. And that's all I'm saying because I'm probably losing my voice. But would this, you know, would I love more things? Of course. Would it be great? Fantastic. Is it scary even just having our middle grades go? Is it scary having all these other items coming in and going through? It is. So like I said, everyone's just even assuming the 1.84 would be. So, you know, I think this is really the, a really good plan. You know, I don't know in terms of if we have end-of-year funds, if that can go back into it and we can get more of the items.
I don't know.
I don't know. That's those are all things to be seen, to see if there are savings. Maybe we don't need that $7,000 for postage, I don't know. So, that's all I'm going to say. Do we need to move this to the board action?
I just want to, you said something that I hadn't thought of. So at the instructional rounds, we witnessed literacy how in action and it was awesome. It really is a great program. One of the teachers said that she taught her team in regular ed the program that she was using. So I think Rainey had suggested at one point, you know, a train-the-trainer type of thing. Is the art position something that if Dr. Willett would want to restore it, and really, this is, he's, he's the expert. He's an expert. I don't think I'm an expert at all. If the art position was something that he wanted to restore and have literacy how as a train-the-trainer or if there are end-of-year funds, I know Karen said it was too late, but usually at the end of the year, I mean, last year we had almost a million dollars in cover. So this year, I don't, I don't think it's going to be that much, but I mean, maybe we could find that $60,000 there. And I don't really know if that's responsible thing to do, but it would be a good way to get art back.
If I, if I could say one more thing about that, that is how we got the literacy how for the special education students now is for money that was left over from last year's budget. So maybe the right thing to do is to keep the art, which actually will leave a small model for one of those JV sports, but I don't even want to open that calendar. And then we can see if we have the money, the $60,000 at the end of the year, maybe that's when we say, okay, we can move forward with the literacy how in the regular ed and just kind of do it that way. And if not, we continue with the train-the-trainer type of thing. But it's just a, just a thought.
And I'll be asking your opinion, Dr. Willett. Because we're not experts. Please speak.
I guess I just want to give you the information because what we have in front of us, what we have in front of us is the budget based on the, based on the changes that the board directed Dr. Willett to make last week. Dr. Willett went back and as he articulated a few times at the end of last week, he used three working days to put together the package we have in front of us. Now, are we actually asking him to go back and make another? are we actually asking him to go back and make another change? So that we can vote on it, so that he can take it to the town manager tomorrow?
No, I'm suggesting we leave the number, but perhaps the direction of how the number was spent. Because it's, the, the art teacher is $52,848. The literacy how that we added is 60. I mean, it's about the same. And that, so that's all I'm saying is, you don't have to change the number, you don't have to change anything other than, yeah, so I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's what I'm trying to find out. Because at some point, we have to snap the button and say, this is the budget that we're going to vote on. And in fact, I believe that we have to vote on it. We should vote on this one.
10 minutes, I think.
Regardless of if we make those changes.
Right, move it, Ash.
Did you want to respond?
Yeah, I can. You know, it's, it's a tough position to be in. You know, I have to go back to, you know, what, what was put out there was put out there, you know, as, as an example. It would have the least negative impact in the words that I use. I think that, you know, the idea, I, I applaud people for trying to think out of the box. You know, I appreciate that. I think the situation that you're in is one in which, you know, and I think sometimes, you know, when we're in a room, sometimes we, you know, we're listening to a lot of information as it comes out. So we all hear something sometimes a little bit different than, you know, what the other people might hear. And what I heard in the room that day during the instructional rounds is that they highly valued the trainers that were there and did not feel like they could do a adequate job of doing it themselves. They needed the trainers, they needed the coaches. So, high fidelity structured literacy means better programs for kids, you know, fewer outplacements. There's a method to the, to the, so to speak, in terms of what we're asking us to do. So, you know, I think that the board went around and made some decisions. And, you know, I think where I'm at right now is you have a budget in front of you. You can, you know, it's for you to decide tonight. This is your budget, this has your name on it. So, it goes from meeting the superintendent's budget to the board of ed. So, you have your name on it now. So, you know, we, we can have a discussion on any aspect of that that you want. I think traditional wisdom on positions is if you're gonna hold on to a position, you're gonna be carrying that position. So materials are materials, positions are positions. And you're gonna be carrying that to the next year. So, you know, whatever position you're carrying into next year, if you have a tough year next year, you're gonna be making decisions about positions again. So, that's the best way that I can answer that question. Otherwise, it's kind of up against the law. I'm not calling any, any, any particular group here less valuable than any other group. It's a tough place to be in, and tonight is your place to be in.
Thanks, you throw the ball back. Can I just ask? I'm just really, is Rini's a possibility, what she's saying?
You know, end-of-year funds is what does, you know, school districts will look to, to, to go to the list of things that you'd like to get. But personnel on an end-of-year kind of thing is, you know, holding a personnel position and using that. Because ultimately, what you're doing is you're keeping personnel position in the budget.
No, I think what I mean though is, could we move the art position to the budget and take the literacy how as the potential to use the end of years?
You know, through end-of-year funds, you, you can, but again, what you're doing is in lieu of a problematic thing, you're carrying a position. You're making, yes, at end-of-year funds, you could use something like literacy how, but you're carrying a position. And so you just have to consider the pieces of it.
So you're saying we have to be considering, are we prepared to support the position going forward after this year's budget, to sort of, going?
Next year, if I'm in a similar place.
Keeping the art, yet the three's left.
You know, it's your, the same decision you're gonna be making now would be next year. It's math, it's art, it's something.
So how many, so we were so focused on not having six additional sections. Forgive me for not knowing this. How many sections of art and graphics combined will we be offering? I know that's, the number has to be combined because we don't really know the structure of what we're teaching, but, like, we're still offering.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have, and when, you know, there was a comment about photography. You know, he, you can't, you probably wouldn't be able to offer the same photography as you talked about last time because if he offers currently a chemical, you know, like a traditional, real old-school photography, they don't do that. So that's something that he was uniquely able to offer that, you know, probably wouldn't. As I mentioned in the last meeting, that would be digital photography probably is a good place. You know, you're, you're going to be offering art. Again, you know, your decision-making is that ultimately you lose six sections of something and that's.
But how many sections do we offer, though?
Well, it's a topic I had time to try to figure out. I mean, you have a unified arts department that you can use to try to figure out how you can balance the section. But ultimately, and I call it unified arts. Not everybody likes that term, that's why I always use that term. But it's the easiest term for me to use because it's sort of a grouping in, in any particular middle school or high school and in K5 as well. But the, their grouping is going to have, you know, that, it's gonna slide around in there based on who we hire. So, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna have to think, we will have to figure out what composition of classes will now take the place of, you know, of those six sections that are going to be there. And that ultimately does have a cost to it, like any other decision that could be made. So.
Can I just pipe in? Because what you need to understand is, I don't know if I'm gonna explain it correctly, but there's an opportunity here with that position to do other things too. And I don't know what that is, but that's up to Dr. Willet and Ms. Fox and even the art department. But you can't wait till the end of the year to do that. They're losing time now. If they know that they can come on that position, they can start searching now for somebody. But they can't do that. If, if you want to keep that position, you have to commit to it now. You wait till the end of the year and they've lost, they've lost time and that's when everyone else is looking for people. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
So I was just asking, so 24 sections, sorry, I'm out of words.
Go, go, please.
I was saying, 24 sections. I, I know it's not 30 sections and I know there's a lot of unknown to what the kids are gonna get based on who's hired, but I think I'm comfortable with what we directed Dr. Willet to put together for tonight because after seeing literacy how in action, I think that is, it, it really benefits the kids at an early age when they need to learn how to read. So, that's the direction we're going in.
I'll make this brief. Well, first of all, you know, everybody had, I respect everyone's opinions and I thank everybody for coming so prepared and speaking so articulately about and where they are, so. But again, and Ashley, I know what she said about sending it to the town council because what they will approve. And I think that we need to be realistic in saying that we're not sending them a 5% or a 3%. You know, right now it's 1.54. With some of the things that I've personally asked to be added in, I, the mathematics were about 1.84, 1.80, give or take. It's still very responsible in budget. But I also think we should be cognizant and be aware because we don't know what the town council is going to approve or not approve, right? It's not that. I know that there was a poll put out there, but it's also our job, again, to put forward a budget that supports our students and that supports our staff and that supports our education and that we feel comfortable with. And I feel comfortable not losing that. I feel comfortable with having the literacy how 110%. I, I think that's a fantastic program. It's gonna impact our district tenfold. But so will our staff members. And yes, if the town council does say that we, they, they don't approve it, that's not our job to jump forward with all due respect. Because I understand what you're thinking. Because of course, I don't want to present something that they're just gonna throw it back at us, right? But I definitely think that it's reasonable in some of the things that we've asked for. And Karen had made mention about some cuts or some previous things that the faculty had asked for in the beginning. And I know that this is probably putting you on the spot, Dr. Willet, but high level, can you give us an example of some of those things? Because these are things that we didn't even discuss over, I think you might have it. These are things that we haven't even really discussed because that was back the first few weeks of November when he presented that. So, with that being said, again, not emotionally, this is, although it's a very emotional subject, we've looked at it very pragmatically. Financially, at financial aspects, but again, as Fisher said, what's our educational return on investment? So education does pay. Education does pay tenfold. We talked about outplacement students. We talked about having students come to our district now, which is phenomenal. So, losing folks, things like literacy how, which I know we're not, but having those programs or losing different staff and administrators and educators, we could possibly lose that traction that we're going and, sorry, I lost my train of thought. But nevertheless, we would reduce outplacements by continuing to educate those folks, right? Which, again, pay now to save later, right? I mean, not pay a fundence, but make the investment where it should be so that we don't pay later by, for instance, outplacing students. Meaning they are students out of district or different things like that because we can't take care of them and fulfill their needs and house. So, long story short, I would just like some of those things highlighted if you could, Dr. Willet. And again, I think our goal should be to put forward a budget that supports our students and staff with the least, you know, negative impact. And I think the 1.87 that was originally presented, I think with the money found and then things put back in, a 1.84, 80, whatever that is, is a responsible budget. And I feel confident that it could be something that I can put my name on and stamp and send to the town council.
So, as part of the conversations we've had, and I can't remember exactly which meeting we had them in, there was a question about what positions had been asked for by administrators and others in the district. We do go through a process of elimination and budget scrutiny before it comes to the board. So the board budget that came to, superintendent's proposal, 1.87, 1.87, had a number of things that I have not agreed, or did not include in the budget. So you're asking for the broad list? Part of the fact has it on there, but, so obviously, for you, you know, the director curriculum assistant or assistant superintendent is not included. Other things that were not included would be an FTE 1.0, a foreman of maintenance, custodial supervisor, EGP. A grade-one teacher was requested, a technology teacher was requested, a kindergarten parent professional was requested, additional social worker was requested, a preschool teacher was requested, library parent professional was requested and math parent professional was requested, special services, 0.5 speech and language, 0.5 assistant technology, 0.5 science teacher, 1.0 social worker for that, that group as well, 3, 3.0 job coaches, TMS, 0.5 parent professional for academic lab, 1.0 reading specialist, 1.0 reading specialist, TMS, THS, 0.5 math. So about 18.5 positions. So, this, these were a number of positions that administrators had argued for and I decided not to include the superintendent's proposed budget because of various reasons that they were requesting, as well as a number of other things.
I have a question on that. The, um, the salaries with the vacancies? Are, like, some of the parent professional vacancies, are those considered? They could be filled from that list that, when it listed as that? And the salaries that have like vacancy parent professional or vacancy.
And this, that, because we, there's, there are vacancies right now. We're, we're trying to find people for it. And that's not.
And that's.
Things that these were in addition to positions. Alright, so there, there's vacancies that people were left and we're looking forward, but we're actively.
Do we even move to extend the meeting past 10?
Make motion that we extend the meeting past 10:00?
Certainly.
opposing favor? Oppose the extensions? Fisher, how does that?
I just want to take the briefest, most understated moment to, again, as I always say, Dr. Willet is trying his very best and he knows what he is doing. He, 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 I mean, this is, this is what he does. So, as a student, thank you, Dr. Willet. And I, I think I'm gonna head out after this one, just because it is getting late. Dr. Willet, one, one, we have the 24, 24 blocks at the high school of art positions right now. The 24 blocks worth of teaching time per two semesters of a year. If the retirements on top of the one position we're losing, that theoretically would be reduced to a, to 12 blocks for next year, correct?
Well, I mean, I know we're talking sections and blocks. I mean, I think, I think the thing to focus on, because again, I look at unified arts as broader picture from scheduling perspective and what spots and places go into it, because it can get scheduled into that. I think what you're looking at is when you reduce a position at the high school, that there's three, three classes in semester one and three classes in semester two. So to me, the, the easiest, most accurate way to refer to it, for me, and others can do differently, but, is that you lose those six sections, three and three. And so that's what you're losing. And some combination of whom we would hire could take what gets put into those, what's remaining from the sections that we have lost. So, that's probably the most accurate way I can answer that. Maybe not the way people want to hear it, but that's really, that's really what it's, what it is. The person is reduced and it's six sections that you lose. And sections can mean different courses. It can be, each section is, could be a different course. Photography, you know, the art course, various, you know, courses based on the expertise of the people that we hire. So we probably will not get the old-school photography back, although I think we may. But that was a skill set that one of the teachers says they even has and they don't know if, of course, you can have that.
And that's, that's regardless of anything but staffing reductions, correct?
Right, you're gonna lose six sections if you eliminate the.
Regardless of anything else like retirements and stuff.
Correct. Yeah, you're really eliminating, you're eliminating a position and that position has six sections associated with it.
Alright.
So I just reiterate, I think that we probably can reduce that art position. Again, looking at some of the data as far as class sizes that we were given by Dr. Willet, I think that we will be okay with that. I don't, I wouldn't support it if I didn't think that. I, as Dr. Willet said, you know, we're dealing with some staff turnover in general and that's, you know, it's always a drain upon any department when you lose qualified people. I think that would have to regard as if we replace this position or not. But again, I think based off on the numbers that I saw, I think that our department will decline. So I'm, I'm fine giving that advice.
So, I'm definitely having a little bit of a hard time with cutting teachers and cutting programs. When we have, in my opinion, a lot of other line items that don't directly affect the kids that are in the budget. I can just tell those. But, I guess, kind of what I'm having an issue with is, you know, for example, last year we added a new department secretary. Like, how do we make the determination then of adding back those kinds of positions just a year ago and now we're talking about cutting an art teacher? Like, why are we not reevaluating these positions that do not affect our kids' education? I mean, these are not people, I mean, unless, I don't know, it's the accountant teaching the accounting class at the high school. I guess that's just kind of where I'm coming from. I just, I still have a hard time with things in this budget that don't affect the kids and I just don't feel that we looked at them well enough. And maybe because we've run out of time, but, so I'm sorry, I have more of a statement, I guess, than an actual question, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Again, with all due respect, now, Jerry, there's something to say right there that is one to touch on as far as concern that we're likely to push forward, would get approved by the town council. I want to make sure that we, as a board, vote on this budget not based on that. I think that on the 24th, we're gonna get the opportunity to sit down with the council and we are going to passionately defend and articulate the budget that we push forward. If we've done our due diligence, which I firmly believe we have, and we're putting forward the best budget that we think we can provide for our students right now.
the best budget that we think we can provide for our students right now, then the town council will do what they do, that we fulfill our obligation to the, to the students, to the district, and to the neighbors.
I have one more question. Um, Dr. Willett, maybe you could, um, talk to the hires of the secretary and the accountant? I know it was already answered in our packet, but, um, my opinion, my experience, is that this goes back to the functionality of our central office and, um, the enormity of this budget, and the people that have to work on that. And, essentially, it does affect our kids, so I think that that's worth the conversation, I guess.
Yeah, I, I answered that in the, in the fact, on the board side, public fact, there's a posted answer to that question, and I stand by the answer that I gave in the fact. You may have noted during the process, I've actually, to the chagrin of many, said that I, you know, I thought maybe a curriculum director or assistant superintendent shouldn't happen. It would be being self-serving, I would say it should. These are operational decisions. I made them because it protects you. If you'd rather have another decision made, that could threaten operationally in your district in a series of ways. So, I've made that clear, I think, both in the meetings that, you know, have occurred on the matter, and in the, uh, the communication that I provided in the fact. Definitely, I can understand why people have feelings they have, but I would make that same recommendation and that same decision tomorrow, because of all the factors that people who've talked to me about that understand, and if anyone would like to sit down and talk, you'd have to go over it in great detail. But, these are the right decisions. They protected the district, and, um, and they're playing out the way that I expected them to play out. And that's actually why you hired me, to protect the district and to make sure we're educating kids. It's not your choice to make trouble. And that's what I do.
Do you want to make your motion to move it to board action?
Motion to H2 budget and to H3.
Any discussion? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions?
report. This, this particular one is for January, which is the 7th month of this year. The report that is attached to this and the spreadsheet that is part of it helps designate all the areas and budget areas and where we are currently for expenditures and enclosures and things like that. Identifies areas of typically, one of them is health insurance, retirement, vehicle, and otherwise. The budget shows an available balance of $797,066, 1.99% of the board's overall budget. I believe that we find down by about, guessing, uh, how much, Mark, did you try to find that a split month in the past?
About $120,000.
$120,000. So, we're about on trend to this time of year, would you say? Yes. So, essentially, we were, are, and are where we expect to be, and, you know, things are, I believe, going in pretty good direction from the standpoint of ending the year in a good place. We will end the year much tighter than we were in the past, because of a lot of reductions to, to trend. So, I, I would be wary about thinking about exactly what we would be looking at at the end of the year. We're, we're closer in the range of what we have been in typical years for what we would have for end of year, so if we go back and look at some of that, um, it's not, not, not like those two state years that were a little bit out of whack, a lot out of whack. So, we, we want to be careful making assumptions about end of year right now, but I am in the process of putting together a list for, um, the board as we get closer of things for them to consider with respect to what we would use it if we had. But, we don't expect to have, to have a whole lot of that. I will go over really quickly some, highlight a couple of things if you're looking at the spreadsheet. Salaries are currently under budget, as additional hiring of teachers and parents continue. We do have open positions. Substitute expenses will continue as the year progresses, and we are going to be using some of them also to cover some of the. Overtime expenses will continue as the year continues. Stipends are currently over budget because paid play has not been received, which you were aware of prior. Health insurance severance, employee benefits for employees will continue to change as we hire new staff. Retirements, force reimbursement, unemployment expenses, uh, will continue to progress. Benefits from consultant is slightly over due to the change to Milliman, to Lockton, um, who's our new advisor. Legal audit tech services, as you know, are, were the budget that we've been using a lot of the legal resources this year. And tech expenses will increase as the year progresses. All repair, maintenance, custodial cleaning, equipment expenses, technical expenses will continue to be spent as the year progresses, as you might expect. Many of the maintenance, custodial, custodial, custodial expenses will not be incurred until the end of the year. Remembering that tuition for out of districts and other placements, we're gonna look pretty negative until we get that first payment and then second payment, so we get our first excess cost payment at the end of this month. So, it's normal to be in that situation right now, and then we will get the second excess cost payment in May, and that'll greatly affect that number. Transportation is slightly over budget. Buses continue to be in commerce to meet the student population and special education needs. Most scheduled education routing is unidentified, um, but it's typically, you know, we're gonna have a little bit of fluctuation in that. We do see that from time to time. Textbooks have not been fully spent for the year. The become supervisors are using the time, and coming up with a couple of suggestions for me in our, one of our next meetings. So, we should be resolving that fairly soon in the next couple of weeks or months. Instructional supplies, miscellaneous and general supplies are currently under budget, and spending will continue through June, as you might expect, in the case. And overall, for the month of 2020, the budget expenses are right about where we expect them to be. Available balances continue to reduce, and as Mark and Mr. Lockton said, we're about 192, 532 lower than, um, than when we were in December, so we're heading in the direction we expect.
I just really have a hard time with traveling conference being already over budget on that, and it seems to keep going up. And I thought FFC, maybe put a, a stop on traveling conference, or maybe we need to put something in place where we need border people. Um, I'm just throwing out there that that's a line item that bothers me a lot of times.
Well, remember that you're looking at last month's budget. You're also, there's nobody really traveling anywhere at this point, per se, nor did they really travel in any excessive way. Um, you know, what you were looking at is, we had a reduction in that line before, and you're seeing an effect of the, it has been frozen. If there is a zero dollar thing, um, what will happen is, I'll take a look at what the mileage would be, and I might send them to something if the mileage is not excessive amount. So, you're gonna see some residual things that were in the system prior to that time, and there's also things that roll up into that. So, um, the part of that at the end of the year that would make the entire group negative has been frozen. There are other things in that line that, you know, that will fluctuate a little bit, but we should come out pretty close to what was, was, um, expected for the, for the year as a general grouping and not just one specific line. So, while one might be a little over, another will be a little under, and we'll hopefully come out close to what we expect or close to breaking even. However, um, there really, there is no travel. I mean, this idea that there's some kind of crazy excess of travel is an absolute absurdity. So, I'm gonna go on the record for that. This is a ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. They're not going anywhere out of control. If anyone would like to sit down with me over coffee, I'll spend a couple of hours with you, exactly where they're going. Finals and facilities looked at this extensively, and I don't think found any issues of what was going on with respect to where they're going. They're going to training so that they can be better off for the students, and there's nothing out of whack in terms of what they're doing. And I'd be happy to sit down at any time with any person and go over, you know, what has been comprised in this request. We are gonna be challenged next year with this, because we're making a $10,000 reduction in this again, so I will tell you, I met with the TEA, and they find this greatly demoralizing, that this is being questioned this way, and I do understand, I mean, it's a budget area, but I think it is getting a little absurd to suggest that there's any increase, I mean, anything really out of whack going out of travel, but I do understand.
Can I just interject?
Hold on a second. Do you have any other?
I don't think that there's any, um, or, and Christina, forgive me if I'm mistaken, but I guess what, when I first looked at, I just was expecting there not to be an increase after what we had discussed. I don't think that we're saying that there's still some funky trips that, um, people are going on. I think it's more looking from last month to this month, we just weren't expecting, or I wasn't, I should say, expecting there to be an increase, and there was, so I think that's really the only thing that we're questioning. I thought we were going to, whether you put a spending freeze or, or, um, exactly how that worked, I'm not sure, but I just don't think we were expecting a additional amount to be included in that. So, I think that's all that we're saying, but yes, based on the meetings and FFC, we have discussed it, and I don't think that there's anything that we think that's going on that's not supposed to be happening. But I, like I said, I think, like, I personally just, I would have expected the number to be the same as last month or lower. So, I think that's the only, the only thing I'm questioning. I'm sorry, Christina, I don't know if that's exactly what your thought process was, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. No. No, and I wasn't suggesting wrongdoing. I'm sorry, I'm tired. It was just, it's always a line item that for me, I feel like after last year going so much over budget, it's just something I feel like I need to, to question more. So, thank you, and I wasn't accusing.
And there are some things that are in the pipeline, and I freeze it, but there's still things that are in the pipeline.
I understand.
So, it's gonna stay low.
Let's move on to the first reading of 9060 modifications.
This is, excuse me, 9060 is our board policy covering suspension of policies by laws and administrative rights. I want to point out what's good, this is the first reading. There's no action requested at this point. This is just to get it in front of the board and the public for consideration, very soon. The changes, the, the adjustment that, that the committee is recommending here is more of a, a housekeeping item. The policy committee deliberated with respect to the current wording. A change was made to require a greater level of support order to suspend a board policy or policies for a specified purpose and for a limited time without publication. This aligns, this aligns, the change makes the language consistent with the level of support needed to suspend bylaws. It essentially says that if notification is given, then a board vote of 50% is required to suspend a policy. If prior notification is not given, then a vote of two-thirds is required. So, it increases that just slightly and pushes the boards towards notification.
Up next, community and leaders on reports.
We had the meet, we had a meeting where we discussed, again, 9060, and, and came up with this, this verdict that was presented.
And town council.
Yes, yes. Town council, we had a laymate last night. Significant discussion concerning the sale of property. There was also a conversation concerning the adjustment of, I believe, cemetery regulations.
Did you want to add anything, Tim?
Um, we got immense pleasure of recognizing John Laitel last night as, uh, the Connecticut Emergency Management Director. So, um, it was a big recognition, very well deserved. And, yeah, we had three things on our agenda, but we got us deep by 10 minutes so far.
Policy.
I love policies. Policy. That's easy. Uh, we met on February 4th. Really, we talked about, you know, a lot of the stuff that we've already talked about tonight, so I won't totally recache it, but we talked about capitalization. Dr. Willett kind of walked us through how the health insurance calculation works, which was very helpful. We reviewed, um, you know, salaries and FICA, and, um, we discussed, you know, that during this year, we're going to, um, Dr. Willett is going to, um, kind of review some stuff with, um, the town council, the town manager, as far as capitalization. We're gonna kind of get a better understanding of what we can and that capitalize, that maybe in the future, we might have that option a little bit more to be able to use some of our 1%.
Yep, communications in that site. Um, we talked about some other kinds of outreach efforts that Dr. Willett's working on, um, as part of his monthly bulletin, and, um, continuing his coll together videos, um, maybe with some additional, like, little 60-second brief videos included, um, in that endeavor. We talked about, um, the idea of, kind of like a little pilot of video streaming with Dr. Willett, and he would possibly, um, set it up so he could receive, um, questions from the public, and have them submit some things ahead of time, and he would kind of interact with them that way. So, you know, maybe when we're through all this budget stuff, we'll have a little bit more time to think about it, but possible little pilot program. Um, we talked about, um, best practices for board communication and utilizing CADE possibly. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get some more information from them. And also, uh, there's a CADE liaison opportunity that I was going to, uh, reach out to them about, and it's, you receive a monthly newsletter, and it's just kind of a, increase little two-way communication with them, um, so we're informed about things they're doing. And that's what we covered for today.
Perfect. I'm not gonna say any other liaison.
Well, there was Birch Grove, but.
I think that.
I think I got her.
Chipper's first. Let's jump down to board action. So, the first one, P1, a second reading of policy 9190 modifications.
Yes, Matt, there. And this is the second reading, and so we can do a quick poll tonight on whether to accept this amendment or not. And I will, I will read it. It adds the curriculum committee. Curriculum committee charged in cooperation with the superintendent and/or his or her designation with review, research, consideration, and endorsement of the changes to the curriculum, as well as to stay apprised of the effectiveness of current programs. Revisions made by the Board of Education standing committee would pertain to resource allocations and not the methods of planning, instruction, assessment, and, is that word? PDR. Curri, no. Curriculum is developed, modified, approved, and implemented by professional educational administrators and teachers employed under the direction of the superintendent and through districts, school curriculum committees, and processes established by the superintendent and his or her design. and processes established by the superintendent and his or her designate.
Want to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt changes to policy 9190 as presented in the Board of Education meeting on January 22nd, 2020, adding a standing curriculum committee with the charges defined in section nine of said policy. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any assumptions? Budget. Do you want to change anything?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Education's adopted budget, dated January 2020, with a 1.54% increase.
Second. Just a point of warning. You're not approving the adopted budget. You're adopting.
Oh, okay.
But that's great. It's fine. It's just Board of Education budget.
So the motion is motion to approve the Board of Education's budget?
No, you are, this is your Board of Education budget. You are deciding what you want to do right now. And then you are essentially, if you vote for this, you are adopting it, in which case it goes over. Second.
Discussion.
I'd like the opportunity to vote on that one.
Can we go to a motion and take first?
Okay, so all those in favor of the 1.54 say aye.
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 Is it going to take?
You want to roll call this?
Yes, please. Okay, great.
Aye.
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 Do we have a motion there?
Sure, I have a motion to approve the budget for 1.84%.
How does that work if we adopted one single?
Doesn't really, I just want to make sure that people understand why we're saying day to 1.54. It's not because we want it lower. It's because we wanted it at 1.84.
Well, policy does give you the ability after a vote to explain it.
So are we not voting? We have a motion.
There's a motion on the table, right? So I say.
This is for 1.84? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Definitely this is a time limit that you can enter into the minutes. If you want to say something about it.
So I'll just speak, the reason that I voted against the 1.54% increase is because I do not believe that it is sufficient to support our kids, our town, moving forward. I think I, I think I've stated why I support the 1.84. Pretty good. Thank you.
I will say, actually, I will never apologize for being emotional about education. And I'm doing this for six years and before that, many years of P T A work and working in, you know, networking in the schools, but volunteering in schools. And my experience has been, our Board of Education has always been asked to compromise, think outside the box, be creative, et cetera, et cetera. So I feel that 1.84 in consideration with everything that has happened the past few years with our district and surrounding towns are having the same challenges as us and same conversations and seem to be adopting also reasonable budgets in that more than 1.84. So I'm voting with my conscience tonight for the students in our district, and I support 1.84.
To public participation. The items.
72, 71 letter wrote. Couple of things. One, I wanted to clarify, in the past, I want to say at least three years, every budget cycle, something that's been set up here that was, if we only knew what the town council wanted, we could work towards that, but we don't know. And while the Board of Ed is a separate governmental entity, when it comes to the budget and the pages, it is not a department because it is a holistic budget for the whole town. So Mike sending you the letter is 100% appropriate, and it's also been done every single year prior. Second, next, Dr. Willitt, I know you started to put up some of the questions on the Board of Ed F A Q. We have our joint council meeting coming up, and we looked at the agenda for that. It is a town council meeting for the Board of Ed to come and present their budget. And the town recommend, the town council recommends and suggests the Board of Ed regarding the consolidation of non-education services of cost savings, of public comment. And then it has petitions and/or questions to the Board of Education from the town council members specific to the Board of Ed budget. So I'm hoping that before we get to that meeting, you may have time to post up the other questions. I know I myself sent in a good battery of questions. And if I get the answers ahead of time, I don't have to ask them then. So, but it's, you know, however you get to it. And lastly, I just want to say thank you very much for going through the budget and throwing something over the wall that you're going to be able to talk to the details to and defend and tell us what we need to know. So I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
George, I wish you knew it. I know a few things. We know that we have higher costs. We know we have less money coming in. We need to figure out how to get there. I notice a lot of town council meetings lately. I don't notice a lot of school board meetings, town council meetings. We need to find out what's really going on with the town. Last night, it just so happened that they, everybody's fighting anything. It's always not in my neighborhood. So we're not getting more money. We have to do one or the other. We have to get out of this little cute town because honestly, 73 years ago, there was less than 1,000 of us. And then everybody else got here. So it's not a cute little town anymore. So get over it. We need industry in here, or we need to cut. We don't have the money. So we need to figure out how we're going to come up with the money. That's either get other stuff in here, the matter what it is, or we have to cut. Another thing is that Dr. said that we usually lose about 20 people, 20 students in one position. We've lost that many positions already. We should be losing three positions. Whether they're art or whatever they are, they should be decided by you guys. But we need to lose three positions. Just to remain the same class size, not make it larger or just keep it in the same grade. Maybe it'll be more in fifth grade or fourth grade or something. But I'll leave it up maybe next year in the near fourth grade year, whatever it is. But we need to come up with ways of reducing the budget that keeps it all. So we're going to. I don't like your buzzer. I think if you're going to have a buzzer for us, you'd have a buzzer for the council also. The board, not the council, I'm sorry, the board members, excuse me. It's kind of rambling. So my thought is only anyways, we need to come up with either one way or the other, and I just don't see this flying. Thank you.
Thank you. This one's up to 68. I just want to thank all of you. It was wonderful that you all worked together, reading the minutes from the last meeting and seeing that you each had a voice on every position that was saved or had been lost. Every program, you all had your say. So the nine of you, thank you. Dr. Willitt, thank you. You've all worked together on this. This is a unified budget. I would definitely go to that joint meeting and support it at 1.54. Just to leave you on a good note, doing some research on the state side, I found that the per pupil expenditure was $13,029 in 13, 14, 18, 19, and went up to $16,155 per pupil. That's 24% in that same time that we had those low budgets. Because that doesn't account for the number of students we've lost. The per pupil expenditure does, and that's all online. So it's a good thing. We always lose. I've been here 20 years. My kids lost things every single year. They did great. Our kids will do great too.
This has to 50 for the diet plan. I would say thank you very much, and I didn't have a problem booking if it posted. I'd say go find every dollar you can and make it even with the, whatever it's called, changing lanes or whatever. Normalize it. Normalize it to whatever the wrong rate is. I will say, I was appreciative of your time going to see a school this week. And it felt like you were woke, believe it or not. I know that's a, you know, kind of a snowflake term, as you guys would say. However, I would take the opportunity to go find yourself awake in three other schools and then go spend some time in the superintendent's office and see the guy running around like a whirling dervish. Take the time. It clearly appeared that you and you really appreciated literacy how in spending time with teachers and parents and admin. Go take some time at the high school and the middle school and Birch Grove to see what's going on there. And they doubt you would have covered our teacher that's going to affect business and industrial economics.
Me, Mary Rose, 37, Ryan Rowan. I'd just like to reiterate what this said. Very hopeful after hearing comments about what people learned when they went to T I S, both here and on Facebook. And I think that's important, that Birch Grove, obviously, in middle school and high school. And maybe moving forward, I'm hopeful that if times are different, maybe we can buck the trend and get something back. That's my hope. Once again, I'm a sixth grader. He does not play freshman sports for a couple of years. But I do know that there are currently 17 freshman basketball players. There are two A3 travel teams. I don't even know how many will play rec. But that's 37 boys vying for a basketball team, a JV team at least next year. Thank you.
Good evening. Andy Powell, 21, Third Road Drive. My comments will be as a private citizen. Your budget is now our budget. As strong as an advocate for expanding our capabilities, it's now incumbent upon us to impress that upon the town council. Money does not equate to a solid education system. If that was true, we would be seeing legions of Madame Curies and Einsteins and Mozart's and George Washington Carvers coming out of those schools that spend $25,000, $30,000 per student. The thing that makes a difference are the educators, the administration, the commitment that they have, but then also the parents. One of the reasons why Collins Education has been fantastic, the graduation rate has been fantastic, the secondary level going to colleges or even to the trade schools, is because the parents have been behind it. It's now incumbent upon parents, in conjunction with the Board of Education, to be a guardian for education now. No one who ran for office ran on a zero-budget promise. It was about integrity. It was about transparency. It was about inclusion. That transparency came forth through the work that you folks did. Probably because you didn't have enough time to talk about all the goals. You dug into the money. You looked at where the stamps were going, where the abacus's were being bought. You looked at all those different lines. I believe you could defend what you're now positioning to the town council. Having 30 seconds, I greatly appreciate it. So now your budget is ours, and soon it will be theirs. I believe that we have the confidence and the capabilities to show to the town that this is responsible. May not be all we want, but it's what we have, and I will be a forceful advocate for the budget to be put forward. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, a little cold here. Kate, I'll eat Tom Green. I think I'd like, kind of raise your hand if you're Maslow. Maslow is, has a famous psychological theory of hierarchy of human needs. And it kind of starts with, so the truth of it is physiological, then safety, then mother beyond belonging, esteem, and self-actualization. There's this idea that you can't really move forward as a person or in a organization, anything like that, although that meeting or basic meets first. So I keep thinking about this. I keep thinking about this. So I'm just sharing. It says, I, you know, some of you know that I often will talk about social emotional learning. It's something that is really near and dear to my heart and something that I've really been advocating for for years, right? So it's this idea that you can't necessarily take a task if you don't know how to sit next to a person, right? You need to work on that. So when I think about the budget document, as I've been watching this process evolve, and I know I very much value diversity of thought, and I'm just kind of sharing my lens. So it might be a little bit different than the rest of yours. But when I see things like the secretary being out of there based on the audits performed, to me, that feels like, okay, they'll pass for due diligence and met that basic need. What's kind of next? So I think this might be a deep mental short, but moving forward, I really hope that the budget can be viewed as a whole, as every single thing in it is there to meet students. A little bit of time though. So at the risk of bringing up postage. That postage allows my daughter to send back, you know, an athletic survey that's going to share a student voice that's really, really valuable. Somebody painting the line in the parking lot and putting up the sign for the child, the child person pick up. This allows parents to pick up their child. Every single piece, even the behind the scenes, scene stuff is really going forward.
Quickly, I just want to thank everyone about their participation, and it was really delightful in terms of everybody, like, just being respectful, and I appreciate that.
I just want to point out that we have every intention, I know Dr. Willitt is already working on scheduling instructional rounds in the winter. I can say one or two quick things. You know, obviously, the, you know, a school system is part of a town. Town isn't part of a school system. So to the extent that we have this department conversation going around, just for clarification, 10 to 22 makes a very strong distinction between a school board and a town council. And the roles are very clearly established. And we will have a joint meeting about those things, you know, where they can make, they can ask, you know, and comment on non-educational expenses. So that is all part of the process. But a board is independent of the town council for a reason, and it's statutory, and that's how it's designed. And that's why you have a board, and that's why you have superintendent. And superintendent doesn't report to the town manager, nor does the town manager report to superintendent. That's obviously not part of the structure. But you have, you know, your obligation is to make sure that things is happening to the extent you do that. You pass it on. We have a meeting about non-educational expenses, and we will have to reply in writing to anything that they ask if we don't accept their input or if they don't, you know, we're setting notes or whatever they suggest. So that's part of the process. Isn't it true, if you look online, you'll see some of your questions have already been answered? Frankly, I have 12 days before that meeting.
You did. I said that.
I think I've had the most use of all of that time. I think you know that. And the board knows how many things I've been handling, so, you know, working on that. And I'll keep posting those things to the back as we get them. that, and I'll keep posting those things to the back as we get them, I think that covers basically what it says.
We have future, up next, I don't know if you want to touch, any of these?
Why does he say 12 days? Is it being?
Let's make a push to a church.